Get your email fix out.
I just wondered if you guys like if you're going to want that.
Yeah.
Well, that's a thing. They think it's on.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission Monday, April 11th, 2022. It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting adjourned. If you please join me in a place.
Let's make to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your vote, please.
Dennison?
Here.
Weeden?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Money?
Present.
Swen?
Here.
Do you have a form?
Thank you.
I'll motion to approve the agenda. Oh, sorry. I moved to, oh, sorry. We are amending. I apologize. I move to amend the agenda to add section nine B four, Bergman quote for Culver Design, and then improve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Yes.
I'll support.
Your roll call, please.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Here's.
Thank you. Tonight, we do have a recognition. I'm very proud to be able to present this to Mr. Clyde Weaver's wife, Gerald. Gerald M. It says, "In loving memory to the honor," oh, I'm sorry, "to honor the memory of Clyde Weaver in appreciation of his many years of dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to our city." Just want to thank all the winners for showing up. My, you know, we appreciate your husband. And your aunt, your father.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this time I'd like to open up for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way in the podium. State your name and committee. Anyone wish to make a public comment? What was, what was? Seeing none, let's move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sean. Go ahead.
This is money I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Your roll call, please.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Here's.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to reports by departments, committees, and boards. And then move our city clerk.
So what I can, what I'm asking for is your guidance on this. We have a dial-a-ride local proposal going on for this year. Normally, we do it in November, but I've been warned by the county and the Bureau of Elections that there could be up to fifteen proposals on the November ballot, which means it could wash out the dial-a-ride. So I'm asking you guys to consider to put it onto the August ballot instead of the November.
To start, I guess, to start the conversation, my only concern is that there's, there's less voters that show up in August than there are in November.
There is.
I agree with that. Actually, I want to see the most people outnumber to cast their vote in that situation.
I agree. The only thing I worry about, and we don't know, is because the deadline for ours is coming up. I don't know how many proposals are going to be, and I'm scared it's going to be washed out.
When you say washed out, what do you mean?
If you have fifteen proposals on there, plus a local proposal on there, that's, you're talking about a two-page ballot. That's my only concern, but I am, I completely see both sides.
Well, I think, I mean, so you just think there'd be too much information given, given serious consideration?
Right. That's what I'm worried about, but honestly, don't know. That's the problem, is how many proposals are actually going to make it onto that ballot. We could see only three in November.
How many do we have in August already?
How many proposals?
Yeah.
None that I know of.
See, I think the people are more prepared in November. I saw, you know, there's more information. I feel like people would still do their due diligence and pay attention to all the proposals. I mean, that's just me.
Another thing, just to, because I want to give you guys both perspectives. If it does not pass in November, there is no chance for it to go onto another ballot, because it is up in twenty twenty-two. So.
Has the dial-a-ride had any conversation about us on their preference?
Not yet. But I wanted to go to you guys, because I, I would prefer November, because I agree with you completely. There's more people that vote. There's higher turnout. You want everybody to see it. But I wanted to bring this to you guys, so you guys had all, all the information.
And at present, we're contracted with Niles, but only through the end date of when the current mileage expires. So should the ballot issue have not passed, we're not obligated to continue with Niles through that contract.
When does that expire?
So it's the end of the state's calendar year, I believe, of September thirty of, is this a little further?
So I think the only, you know, if, if we were to put it on in August, the only thing I would suggest is that we really push it on the city website, on Facebook, maybe even send out mailers, letting people know what's up and what we're up against.
Can we do that, though?
We can provide information. We can advocate aside, but we can provide information. You can let them know that if it doesn't pass, that that service goes away.
Sure. I mean, I personally think it's a really valuable service that our community needs, because we have a lot of people that can't get to the store, get to the drugstore, get to the doctor. So I think it's something that is very valuable. So I don't know. What are your thoughts? August, November?
Me personally, I think I'd like to see it go on the August ballot, but it needs to be publicized. There, you know, we need to do the due diligence on this, because, you know, like Kyle said, if we wait till that November date, it may be washed out, and then we're losing a valuable service to the community. I mean, it's, it's, you know.
Yeah, it's kind of a toss-up, just because you don't know what's going to be, that deadline's not here for November. But the August deadline is May tenth, so it's coming.
Who?
Yeah. So it's kind of like, all right, we talked about it, and this is your guys' decision, and, because we're, we're waiting both options. So.
I guess I would give my, I would, I would put my vote on August with the conditions that we send out information and, and put postings online and on our city webpage and.
I, I have a question. The, the people who would use it most, how do we know what we're reaching those people? Because those are the ones you really want to vote.
Right.
How do we reach them? Is, if they're already allowed, who don't do Facebook?
We could do mailings, right? We could, we could.
Yeah, I, we've got enough changes throughout the year that we've been talking about starting to do a city newsletter. And so that seems like something that we're excited to put in there. And we also have all the contact information for our local area committee for the dial-a-ride. So direct mailings and conversations with those individuals, so they can share work with the people that they, because they write it themselves regularly, so they know everyone who writes it. And I would also share it with the dial-a-ride system over at Niles, so they can maybe have a hand put on the bus or something of that nature. Yeah, that way we know who's closer.
I think if we could do those things, I think August does make more sense.
Yeah, we need to really yuck it up, though.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we need to.
Well, yeah, especially looking at the voter count. It's just a pass of twenty twenty. I mean, they're both very low. But I mean, November is definitely double.
Yeah.
So it's, but at least if we do it in August, and for some reason it doesn't pass, then we have another chance. That's the only thing that concerns me is with a local proposal like that. And if it doesn't pass in November, for whatever reason, well, we're out of luck.
So why would we put it back on in November if the constituents voted it down in August?
Because you want to keep trying. You're hoping that, okay, well, voter count's double. Let's see if these people actually vote, or we get more information out explaining what they're asking, or, or people just don't understand. A lot of people go in and they don't know. They don't know the proposals. So I think this one's been around long enough
And I think, you know, it wouldn't, I mean, putting it back on there in November wouldn't necessarily be advocating for it, but I think if enough of us believe that it's an important service for our community to have, then, then we should, you know, try again. And, and if they would vote no again, if, if people really don't want it, then.
Then why would we put it in November? I'm for August, too. I, but the double advocate, if they voted it down, I don't think it would be very favorable if we tried it again like a month later.
I've seen about four or five local proposals go in August and get turned down, and then go back on.
I mean, a school bond, a school bond.
And you think that's a sheer volume thing?
I do.
I'm comfortable with it. I find it obvious.
August. So would you like to make a motion to put it on the August ballot?
This is money I'd move to have the dial-a-ride proposal on the August second, twenty twenty-two primary ballot.
I'll support. Thank you. Your roll call, please.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey? Here's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to Public Services Director.
I don't know who wrote this agenda, but I'm on the agenda before Rich is, so it's me, right? All right. The demos in town that we were slated to get done, the Victory Street Park is completed. They tore it down, what, last Monday? Rich asked us to remove a fence. Our, get quotes on removing a fence. Well, we had some time last week, so we removed the fence and straightened it out and cleaned up the other part of the fences. And we found five bottles of pills that we turned over to the cops. They're going away for analysis. I haven't heard back on what they were yet, but found five full bottles in the leaves that were along the fence and in the, grown in the grapes, grapevines. That's what I have on the demos. Obviously, the site at six oh six is clear. Waiting for the budget to be approved in August, so we can get moving on that. We had a meeting this morning, and we got another blow to the shorts that you're going to learn about a little later. But the DPW construction, we had a great meeting, I thought. hashed out some things and figuring out the building and, and what's going to go in it and how it's going to work. And we're, I feel like we're moving along, but we're waiting on the Bus Terry numbers in August to get everything rolling. The repair of the two thousand nine F two fifty, three-quarter ton pickup truck. We took it to the shops here for the timing. None of them would touch it. They didn't want anything to do with it. They told us it could be this, or it could go way deeper into the engine. I have a mechanic buddy of mine that I went to high school with that is practicing in Grand Rapids. I called him up. I said, hey, what's the, well, it could be a number of things. We took it up there. He's given us a quote. It needs a motor put in it. The truck, I feel, is worth it, because it'd be one that my part-timers drive. It's in better shape than the ones, some of my full-timers are driving around right now. The unfortunate thing is, is right before this happened, we went through the truck, and we put all new front suspension on it, all new tires on it. It was running perfectly. It has a plow for it.
What truck is this? Is it a maroon?
No, it's a, it's a white Ford that used to be for the water department. And we took it over when they got, when we traded the sixteen Silvers, the silver F two fifties over to them, or one of them. And it was built for, basically, we were just going to use it as a part-timer truck, something that they can, and they're not going to hurt one of my new trucks dinging it or whatever. If we don't repair this truck, I need a truck to replace it. That's, that's where we're at. And I don't think, I don't even know what the quote is.
Fifty-six hundred dollars.
Fifty-six hundred. He said there was possibly, if he could reuse the manifolds, but those manifolds on those Ford trucks are very famous for cracking, and that's how you get the famous Ford tick when you drive them. So he found a long block for it. He was going to try to secure it if we voted on it.
The body's in good shape?
For what it is and what we're going to use it for, yes. It's in better sh, I'm, we have a Dodge at the cemetery that my full-timers drive every day.
Better than?
Way better than it. Way better than it. It was a used truck that Bill Marks bought for, for our water department.
I think I saw it. It had a hundred and fifty-six thousand miles on it.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
How many miles are on the new motor?
Um, I don't know if it was on there or not. I think it was less than a hundred thousand. I'm not sure.
Uh, one fifteen.
Was it one fifteen right in?
Fifty-six hundred is cheaper than a new truck.
Yeah, it's a lot cheaper than a new truck. Maybe double check with the landfill guys. I'd be able to approve it not to exceed. Maybe talk to the landfill. We have a lot of this going on, camp heavy equipment. Maybe they have a connection a little closer to home. Now, I have an option for us to, uh, be able to not to approve, or not to exceed number.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Oh, I have a comment. Um. So as I was saying about this day, it comes back to the maintenance program, and nothing against anything you guys have done or doing, but as we're sitting up here, and we just get these random things thrown in front of us, all these numbers and stuff for a vehicle that we have no idea. If we had, when we have a request like this, a sheet, maintenance sheet, that says everything that we spent on this truck, get, boy, you know, we spent forty-five thousand dollars on this truck now, and it's still not performing like it should, turn, should just get rid of it.
Yep.
So I think that's something we really need to push towards.
We have a computer program. I can print that stuff off for you guys and show you what we put into our vehicles all along, if you want. It's, I guess I didn't think about it. Literally, the truck had six hundred dollars worth of front-end parts worked onto it and eight hundred dollars worth of tires put on it. And then we started it up to move it in the shop one day, and it was running like it had a cam in it. I mean, it was boom, boom, boom. And we're like, what in the world is, well, it's a, it's a famous, on that style of engine, it's a famous Ford issue. I don't, it jumps timing, and once it jumps timing, if it jumps it hard enough, it, it roasts the... I can't think of what it is. But it, it really screws something up if it does it the, the hard way. And it, this thing jumped it. He said he found metal shavings in the oil pans. So.
I'll say it's already up there.
Yeah. He, he would fix it. He said, I'll put the timing stuff on it, but I'm not going to guarantee that it's going to run even to get back home without doing it again.
If he doesn't change the engine, you mean?
If he doesn't change it.
What do we get for if we sell it to him?
I don't know that he wants it.
If he had a new motor, he'd sell it for twenty, right?
Well, yeah, exactly.
Anything else?
I mean.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that needs to be a consideration, though. I mean, if we put a new motor in it.
Can we flip it?
We need to, I mean, one of the things that we as a group had asked Heather is to come up with a list of our equipment and what your replacement needs are going to be over the next five years, ten years. And I think that would be helpful, like Cameron said, in making decisions with, how many trucks do we have? How many are we really using every single day? It just helps us make decisions, but I think, sure. But I think if this truck is running, then it is running. I don't, I mean, again, I'll say that fifty-six hundred is cheaper than going and getting a new truck. And you've already got money invested in it, so I guess fine, but you need to, to move forward as, as long as it doesn't turn into a seven thousand dollar engine or an eight thousand dollar.
The only way it can be checked out, Patrick, was literally to take it somewhere and have it, the valve covers tore off it, and the oil pan dropped out from underneath it, so you could actually see what was going on. So Wesners and Denny's both told us there's a little module underneath the valve covers. We were going to tackle it. We are not set up in the equipment-wise now to do that, and I just said that, I, we can't. I can't have it tore apart in the shop when I can't get something else back in the shop. So.
So Sean, I just pulled it up. So we're looking anywhere from fifteen to twenty-plus, unused two thousand nine, three-quarter ton. I reset. I mean, it's, it's anywhere from that.
And you're not going to get much for that if it doesn't have an engine.
Right. You're going to get scrap price out of it. We're going to take the tires off it and hope they fit on something else and take it to the scrapyard.
Do you have any other questions for?
You've already had, is this still up there?
It's still there.
Okay, because I, as I say, because it was towed up there, I see.
Yeah. Yeah, you saw it a little bit that day. Yep.
All right, I'll move to approve the two thousand nine to F two fifty repair not to exceed five thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty cents.
Your support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Your roll call, please?
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Here's.
Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Um.
I don't know unless.
Mike, we added to the agenda for you to go over the Bergman quote for the Culver.
So the quote for the Culver, I'm sorry, I didn't have the agenda. So the, the quote on the Culver came in, and the H and K.
Excavators.
Yes, construction with ABB has estimated their cost alone to be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that doesn't include?
So that's just the excavating. That doesn't include what Eagle's going to tell us we have to do to move the water over, around. That's just the excavating of the Culver, putting the new Culver in.
That being said, the Culver is going from what is currently there, like eight foot wide, to a twenty-foot wide, fully concrete-constructed, humongous overpass. It's kind of ridiculous, in my opinion.
In my opinion, it's really ridiculous.
Now, is the purpose of this Culver just to get across the creek? Is there any other value to it other than that?
Well.
I think it gets to the dog park, gets to the salt bar, but.
Yeah. Here's the, if you cut me off from going over that Burke Culver, I can't get to the salt bar.
Right.
In which we're not putting on the new site. That we're not moving down, we'd have to move it to the flood plain, and it already got moved out of the flood plain.
So it's like a, it's like a, a no win.
What if we put an access road off the trail? Could we do that cheaper?
Well, the, I, I mean.
Half a million dollars for, for a little bridge is a little scary.
Yeah. Well, they haven't even gotten their numbers back yet. Literally, the three hundred and fifty thousand was just to excavate.
So with, with all the permits and stuff, they were, they were actually saying it would be between three fifty and five?
In five hundred thousand, yes. Somewhere in that number. They did not have a concrete number, but they knew it was three hundred and fifty thousand.
And, but I think there might be optional there. I mean, even Ralph had mentioned in the meeting today that, you know, part of what Eagle wants to do is divert the creek while they rebuild the Culver. And what Ralph was saying is if you use just a bunch of different pipes rather than just one huge Culver, maybe you could leave the creek running while you're doing some of the work, reduce costs. But I think that's all things that need to be explored. But here's the other kicker, is the existing Culver collapsed. There's a big hole in it.
So Friday, we got to call, five high school students left the high school, broke into our barn up on top of the hill, threw rocks at our equipment inside the barn, threw rocks inside the barn, and threw rocks at the truck that's sitting outside the building that we pulled out so we'd have room in the barn. We caught them. The, we called Tim. He dealt with them. We called the parents. The parents all showed up. The good thing is, is we really couldn't find any hard damage. Now, obviously, I don't have any electric in there, so I don't have lights and can't see exactly what they did, but couldn't see anything, obviously, what they did. But they, I had to drive across the Culver. There's a hole in the Culver in the center of the road now, this big. So in years past, it's been off to the sides. We packed concrete in it. We patched it up the best we can. It's literally in the center of the road, and it's, you can put a fifty-five gallon drum in it, and you can see clean down the way that it goes into the creek. So. Now, I also spent the afternoon after our meeting, I talked to Carl Boling, who could help us out in some ways. He, he's expressed some interest in it before. I talked to Paines and said, hey, is this something you guys can tackle? He said, well, we can definitely get on board with Burke holders that deals with Eagle all the time. We'll get you some numbers. I don't know that I'm real comfortable with the people out of Kalamazoo, because they do, they expect big money. And that's just me. The, the further away you go from home, people around here have reality to what we have and what we can do. You know what I'm saying? I'm not trying to be that guy, but.
No, I'm with you, because I, I was actually, I was shocked at just how nonchalant he dropped that number at that minute today. My jaw hit the table.
Yeah. Especially when one of them alluded the other night to sixty, this, between forty and sixty thousand is what I believe I heard a number.
That's probably true.
Numbers between. And then he comes in, and he's like, yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand to excavate it, and we're dealing with Eagle, and we could be up to five hundred thousand. So.
We are, we have separated from this project and get some real competition.
Yeah, that's what our intention is. So what we're asking for tonight is an approval of Bergman, indicating they would help us design a solution. That would be a separate enterprise of what we're currently engaged with them to do for the design of the building. They said we can approve an amount not to exceed nine thousand. They can begin that work since it's an urgent issue with the whole developing, and they can start working on that, so we can get a bid out.
I'm personally not sold on you and Bergman again.
Okay.
I mean, is it imperative for the project, as a guy?
So they, they alluded to, if they could do it while we're doing the excavation on the site, then they don't have extra mobilization fees and.
Which makes sense. I mean, you know.
The, the problem is, is that I have just placed my pre-order for salt, road salt. I had told the sixth of April to place the order, and I just pre-ordered three hundred tons of salt that will be here.
They just got to go across that road.
And, and for all it's worth, we really, we, I mean, we laid it out Bergman today because of their adding cost. And let them know that we were all very, very surprised. And let them know that we were all very, very surprised by that. And that we had questioned that when they showed up at the cheapest price. We were curious how that happened.
And they're going back to their owner to see if they can get a lower price for us within the next second day or two is what they said.
But the intention, I think, is to keep this completely separate from the D P W building. Now that it's really a repair because it's got a gany hole in it.
I mean, probably for the time being, I'm gonna have to have the salt dumped somewhere else. Huh?
Feedmill?
I, it, it can't sit outside because if it does, it'll get hardened and then we won't be able to use it anyways. But I'm gonna have to have it dumped offsite and truck it in myself using the trail and getting in there.
Can you dump it to feedmill then? I mean, how, how quickly do you have to get it inside?
What? Can't rain while it's outside. So...
Yeah, I don't know what one of those domes caused that.
They would go to the side of one of the silos and sort of... Can you schedule when it's getting delivered or is it just gonna show up someday that...
When the ship pulls into port and they start loading trucks is when I get my salt. They call me and say, we're bringing salt tomorrow.
I guess it'll be all hands on deck if this salt is...
Buy a couple of those Costco metal containers and unfortunately dump it in. Skid steer by skid steer load, if you have to.
Yeah, and then the, then the other problem is, is getting it from the salt barn when I need to use it, 'cause obviously our project isn't gonna kick off until twenty-three sometime.
So back to the culvert. Why does it have to all the way to your place? Is that an Eagle thing or can it be a repair like Sean mentioned?
It, it's an Eagle issue. They indicated because of the re-assessment of the floodplain that they've done, they now believe the culvert that's in place is undersized and not large enough to support the amount of water that would need to be there in the mountain with, there's a flood that...
I guess the, you know, the one reason that I would advocate for just giving Bergman the money to get this going is, and I know I say this a lot, but it's just to keep things going because as someone who's dealing regularly with excavators, it's nearly impossible to get any work scheduled. And the longer you wait, the longer it's gonna get. Pushed out and forced out.
Where are you pushing against it to get it done? The season, get everything lined up?
But I am, now that you said that, actually, you just made me think of something else. Like, if you get it in the salt barn, how, whoa. I mean, I, I don't see that culvert being there anytime soon.
It's not gonna be there next month.
We're, we're gonna have to have an alternative solution of some sort.
What would be the possibilities of using those silos up there?
For structurally, I don't think that's feasible.
What, what? Inside or the outside?
The inside of the, the silos up? I think they're still torn. Well, I'm almost a hundred percent sure that they're still torn in those silos and...
I think he's right.
I don't know how you're gonna get that out of there.
There are pits too in the bottom.
Well, yeah, there, I know there's pits, I...
What about, we need a new cemetery building that's not in a floodplain?
Yeah.
For three hundred and fifty-five hundred thousand dollars, if you could build a pole barn over there.
And use it for the storage of salt, salt storage.
Well, I don't know, but at the same time.
Running into a space issue there too, 'cause there ain't a whole lot of space out there for a building that's not used as...
Well, and then do you wanna be driving trucks?
It's a long ways for our equipment. I mean, we'll do it if that's what we come up with because I'm telling you, that culvert ain't gonna be replaced by the time Snowman McAden gets here next year.
Would it be, I mean, I go back to the access road thing. Does it make sense to do an access road off the trail or?
It's, it's worth considering.
I don't know if the access, if you're coming off the trail, that it's wide enough to get a big gravel train down there.
Pick up truck.
So, so if we, if you come off of the feedmill, the end of the feedmill there, there's some sort of a structure at the end where we own that property and come through the woods there and down, you probably could get across and cross the trail. But you're opening yourself up for...
Yeah, we take down all the trees.
Yeah, well, there's a way through there because it's a, it's a, there's a power line that goes through there. It's a right of way already, but I don't know what our legality is. We own that property, a sliver of that property that goes back there anyway. So, I mean, there's a possibility, but I don't know what it's gonna cost to construct a road rather than...
Alright. What about the dome on, just move it, one of those portal dome things down, kinda like what Carl had in the Kawaza style, maybe a little different, down on the main D P W area. They're gonna be working here and it's going down, but...
You're running into the floodplain issues there too. But we're not moving...
What if we temporarily set up one of those domes on four one River Street? You know, you could stand up those big concrete blocks and then just put a canopy over it to cover the salt.
And that's what I've just been doing.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not against any of those.
'Cause you can separate your sand and your salt in there. That's what some of them are doing with those big blocks.
Just like, what's the, what's the cost of all the salt you're gonna do?
Uh, I don't know what it is per ton yet through my deal. They haven't gave me a price yet. Well, we actually, I didn't order my late season fill last year because I wanted to use the salt that was, has been in the barn for years that's was hard and crusty and my guy, guys are mad at me because it's a real pain in the butt because I had to keep getting in the truck and stumping the big chunks down and... So our barn is almost empty. So I pre-ordered fifty more tons than I normally get and I have a backup order of a hundred and fifty tons that I can buy later in the season.
I guess we don't, we also have to, you know, probably get around access to that, that field and all that long term.
Yeah, no worries.
Hey, Mike, what's, uh, what's Carl got out there at the end of Tera Coop on Bicker Town Road, those watch and huts out there? Would, would any of those be able to accommodate? Because they're pretty good size. They, they
I don't know.
Pull a lot of big equipment in and out of there.
I don't know that he's gonna want us to fill them full of salt and eat the sides of them away. That's not what you should use for.
Still doesn't really work very well.
Um, I mean, it's a possibility that he'd even let us store some salt out there. I, I don't know. But once again, you're running into, we gotta put something, a structure up to put it on. So...
It's funny that that thing collapsed now because, you know, this goes back to the old Larry. But Neil Burks, when he was fire chief, that was, that, that drive across there was a big concern. And we, we know, we would never take our aerial truck, the old aerial truck across there just because that, that
You were rare.
Bridge was the capacity. Yeah. It was, it was bad back then and this goes back to the eighties. I mean, so...
What kind of salt is it, Mike? What do you call it, rock salt, solar salt?
It's just rock salt.
Just rock salt? Twenty twenty-one prices were fifty-six dollars per ton.
Yeah. I think I paid eight grand for what I got last year, if I remember right. So I don't know what twenty-two, twenty-three prices are yet. They haven't come out with those yet, but I had to commit to what I needed. So...
Makes sense. We gotta be tight.
Even if, I mean, even if we find somewhere to give the salt or put the salt in, I'm assuming we, we still need to fix the culvert.
Absolutely. Well, either that or come in off the different way, like Patrick said, and get rid of the culvert, go over the creek altogether. Which is also why we shut down Buchanan Metal Forum from using the other culvert that I'm sure is in just as good a shape as the one that we're having issues with.
See, I think, I think it makes sense to get a good design for the culvert and then also have somebody look at what it would cost to put a road in. I, I have a second road, I don't think is a bad thing.
Is there a possibility of using Amtrak the right of way there?
Um, no, I don't, because that's even further up the, the hill.
It'd be behind the salt farm.
Yeah, well...
Side rather than coming in the trail.
They have fences also. Their fence runs all the way along. Well, except for when it gets out.
It's not much of a fence, I'm saying.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that, that, that Amtrak, when we got permission to go on Am, we literally had a time period when we were allowed to be on that road to go in to do the well back to back. And it was, uh, they watched us the whole time.
I mean, I would, I would be leery of trying to deal with Amtrak to sneak under there right of way and...
It's all kind of permission you have to require just to work next to a rail.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I mean, those silos up there are a prime example.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah. Being able to move in and out of there at any given time.
Right.
Can we, can we look at mapping out a road, like very, very soon? And figuring out if it's all on our property and, and then maybe we could talk to a few people and see what it would cost to put a road in.
And we're talking design for either the culvert or the road. We might approve the nine today, is that what you mean?
Well, I mean, so regardless of the road, the salt barn, whatever I was saying was, we still need to get the culvert fixed if we wanna be able to access the dog park, the baseball fields, that whole back area. I mean, and, and we have all that equipment in the barn on the hill and the salt barn.
They had access coming through Sunset Park?
No.
No? There's no bridge over there anymore?
Well, it's a walk-in bridge. It's a truck bed that's been laid across there that's been...
Well, I mean, I mean for the park, they're, they're...
Oh, yeah, the dog park, yeah, they can walk in.
That was a conversation for our lot of concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, the days of laying down a couple railroad ties and driving your tractor across the bridge hasn't been more, so, yeah.
I mean, really, if you wanna maintain the dog park, if you wanna maintain any of those, I mean, I, I just think that culvert's pretty important unless we're gonna make the decision that we're never crossing the creek again with equipment.
That's the point of the access road, right?
Yeah. That would be where your road would have to come in and you'd have to come in from up on the end of Days Avenue, straight down and then cross the trail.
Oak Street.
You'd, oh, yeah, off of Oak Street. Yeah, off the end of Oak Street. Yep. Basically, we were running right along those railroad tracks until we got back there by the salt barn and then we would have to come across the trail right into the front of the barns there. But that's also, then we can't access it from our barn. We have to drive all the way around to get us there.
I, I don't think there's a way around having to find a temporary structure for your salt.
I would agree with you at this point.
I'm thinking more the culvert, long-term as an access road standpoint versus if we can buy one of those temporary structures, it doesn't have to be anything fancy to hold salt, right? Put it down there by the...
I mean, I'm gonna bet you're still at the two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar range for that right there. That's what you're making.
Well, we wouldn't be able to have, we wouldn't be able to have it down by the floodplain, by the D P W building anyway, though, we...
No.
No.
I said River Street would have to be where we would...
They say the salt has to be so many feet out of the floodplain, is that what you're saying?
It just can't get wet or it gets hard.
Then we wouldn't be able to get the Eagle permits to put it in the floodplain soon enough. It would, it would take too long to process the floodplain permit, actually do it.
When, when I started at the city, the salt barn was actually right in front of the old water barn that we turned down. It was right on a pad right there and the D E Q came in and said,
Too close.
Yeah, you, you're in the floodplain. It has to get out of the floodplain. So then it came...
The moral of the story is that Eagle is really okay with that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, they're looking out for the, here's what the real, we have a trout, a designated trout stream. So when those words are communicated together, it's not good.
I get that. But when the gentleman given us the price says that it's a river and we need to divert the river...
Well, the officer doesn't know where we come from, where we're from, so...
I, I would like to see us explore a temporary structure for the salt. The road, the alternative entrance. But I, I, I mean, I, as much as I want to, I still think you need to give a design for any culvert that maybe won't be twenty feet wide and where did they get that twenty foot wide? Who came up with that?
That's all part of the Eagle thing, I think. I think Eagle told them it had to be twenty foot wide.
That was my understanding, because it came from Eagle.
That they couldn't have a single vehicle crossing there anymore. It had to be twenty foot wide.
Maybe before we spend, uh, what do you get a second opinion on that design specs?
Well, there is some design, I mean, well...
See, that's the... Are you Eagle more regularly than Bergman?
It wasn't Bergman that has even dealt with the Eagle, it's A V B that has called Eagle and done that part of that. Permitting fees.
Make this, made a month, eighty-two months holding up the culvert design. How much does that impact the culvert project as a whole, do you think?
It depends if we can do that alternative road or... I mean, there's, there's a lot of factors. If you want a second opinion though, I mean, do you want me to put that out for an R F P and have a certain price really, because you know, it's gonna cost to get a second opinion, obviously.
Do we have any, do we, do we know anyone who works regularly in Eagle that they could call and maybe just find out what would be required for a new one?
Our local people, we have Adam Marsh White Men. They work more locally with our Eagle roads.
I could ask the White Men if they would, we work a lot with them on the trail project. I could reach out and see if they would contact Eagle, double check that for us and then maybe see if they would also give us a quote for putting in a road for accessibility, an access road.
I'd come up with that.
So do we just wanna table this?
Can.
Yeah. You can work on that?
Yeah, and I'll just get that to you guys as soon as I can. And depending on how quick I can get a turnaround, we'll either express it at the next meeting or if you guys are willing to do a short special meeting if I get it quick, maybe we can do that. But I'll, I'll try to press as fast as I can.
Well, I mean, it'd be good to know anyway, I guess. I was gonna say, if we're putting in a road, do we really need the structure for the salt? But it'd be good to know the prices of everything so we can make a informed decision.
And I, I'm not quite sure that they meant twenty foot. I think they meant twenty foot across the creek, like the creek bed has to be twenty foot.
And that's what, that was my understanding, yes.
So I think that's what the, I think it's neck down. I don't think that culvert's double wide. I think that culvert's only a
I thought it was eight.
Eight, ten, six or eight foot wide, but round two is what it is. So...
Distance.
Yeah.
Let's just do a, what better, maybe a distance factor?
So I think they're opening it up twenty feet wide between, I think it's...
Now, the length of the string, the stream, I would, I would...
The width of the street that would be twenty feet.
Yeah.
Which means that the bridge would actually end up being forty feet probably by the time you put in all the structures at the end. I mean, it's a monstrosity.
Yeah.
So it would be good, I think, to make sure that's really necessary.
We really should try to see if we can keep it from being a bridge and keeping it a culvert, 'cause then we have to go through all the inspections.
Every year, I mean, annual bridge inspection, which are usually...
Well, that's what I mean. And I think that's how the, I mean, I don't know. I, I think that's how the money got out of control anyway. Like, why is it a bridge? All we need to do is get across the creek.
Because every year they have their requirements for everything and make everything even harder. I mean, that's just the short honest.
As it is right now, I have one bridge in this town and it's over the creek. And it's an annual inspection every year.
And it's funny because a lot of that's very regional and, and specific to your individual inspector in your region. Because my previous community, we had to have inspections every year for even pedestrian bridges that were teeny. I mean, it just depends on how pinky they are with your community who works in your region.
Well, I think it makes sense to look into some things. Then we can consider all the options.
To me, it looks like right at the end of Berro Road Street, South Hope, there is a property owner that blocks our way.
Oh, does it? I thought we owned that property continuously. I wasn't sure. I hadn't looked at it.
Along the tracks. It's very small though.
Ooh, but not when you take, when the big Amtrak's right of way, 'cause that line is on top of that property owner that teaches this property right there. The bridge blocks our way and then that doesn't make that whole property theirs, not the city's. I'm not sure the access that we have back there.
So that would be a short piece of business.
It may be theirs for, I mean, according to that. But this isn't always right because it shows the American Legion who made the property all the way across the street.
I know the wall. I wish they could get that fixed.
The American Legion, I don't think they have a corner or something.
There a wall all the way across there, yeah?
I see that, yeah.
Alright, anything else, everybody? Good response on that up there the other day.
And thanks for closing that sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Thanks. Uh, maybe not the community development directory report.
Brief presentation that I want to give you guys to kind of address some of the agenda items, uh, our agenda. Uh, first, Mike brought up Victory Park and, um, just wanted to give a quick update on that. We, actually, we see, um, several, um, really positive emails and comments from neighbors who've seen progress on that project. Remember, we, um, in Andrew's plan, Andrew's, uh, vision for Buchanan, we met a lot of the neighbors to propose, uh, park improvements. And the city kind of pledged, hey, we're gonna do what we say we're gonna do and let's keep talking. And since then, we have, uh, made, we said we're gonna make the improvements to the port and the nets and the striking, and we did. We said we were gonna pursue acquisition of the parcel in the north to double the size of the park, uh, and we did. And we said we're gonna knock down the house and grade it and hydro seed it, and that just happened. Now, we're moving on to discussions about the construction of the pavilion, which is a priority for the neighbors. And we have, uh, Kevin Archer who's offered to work with us pro bono to, um, develop a concept in conjunction with the neighbors, uh, out of the discussions we've had. And we're meeting with them tomorrow to look at that and we'll get feedback on it. So, uh, this is, uh, this is, um, a city that's leading a project in a neighborhood that could really have benefits to that neighborhood and it's leadership from the commission that says, we're gonna do something and then we do it, so. We'll keep moving on that path, it's, for us, it's, it's an exciting project and, uh, uh, we're, we're talking to the neighbors, we're getting feedback and we're moving forward, so, it's exciting. I wanted to give just a brief presentation, I gave this presentation to the Great Lakes Saint Lawrence Initiative a couple of weeks ago and kind of a really cool thing happened during it, so I wanted to just explain that to you. This group is a group of a hundred and twenty acre mayors who have cities on the Great Lakes. And they were kept formed in a famous way, Mayor Daley at the time, you know, Chicago invited these, all the mayors to, uh, talk to the John Hancock to, uh, join this group. And basically, it was, that was in two thousand and three, and his point was, we're all sitting cities on the Great Lakes, but none of us are capital cities. So we don't have the clout to, uh, do some of the lobbying and the heavy lifting to get funding for clean water and, and ecological restoration and all these types of projects. So for the last twenty years, they have built kind of a powerhouse, uh, for, uh, Great Lakes projects and, um, so little Buchanan was presenting their project, uh, in, uh, the, uh, the Michigan Forum, so we're up against a lot, a lot of projects around the state. And, um, as part of the project, I had to give, basically, I pitched our project to, like, four different breakout groups, including scientists from NOAA, um, engineers, ecological experts. And they gave me feedback on how to best position the project for success. And one of the things that came out of this is that Buchanan has the opportunity to become a model, uh, on a project that could be replicated, uh, for other inland communities that, uh, are on tributaries to the peaks of the Great Lakes, making a case that, uh, by this kind of collective effort of all these towns employing these best practices on clean water, ecological restoration, runoff, these types of, uh, best practices, that you can make, uh, a significant improvement to the coastal communities of the Great Lakes, so. Uh, so that's really what happened. I, I was pitching this project, um, and they said, hold on, looks like you guys have a, a vision and, um, sorry. And I was just giving them some context and noting the obvious that the St. Joe River is the entire northwest order of Buchanan. And, uh, it's possibly the most under, um, leveraged inland river in, certainly in this half of the state. And it's this amazing resource, it's also, um, still so close to, sorry, Lake Michigan, fifteen miles away. So, basically, they were saying, Rich, make the case that you can make the, the positive impact to the Great Lakes. And, uh, and this was kind of an, an epiphany that all of a sudden made our little project be more competitive. In, in a field of all these other places like Grand Rapids and coastal communities that are making a pitch for, um, these ecological, um, projects. There's our river, that's a view from Walden Bridge. You know, at the same time, we have a downtown revitalization, we're doing efforts like trying to connect downtown to the riverfront, being poised for a trail extension, kind of explaining all this to them. And then just making the, the case about Buchanan's relationship with water. So reason Buchanan exists is water. Potawatomi people were here a thousand years ago because of water. Buchanan developed as a mill town because of water, um, Clark Manufacturing came, um, we had, uh, supposed to grow in this industry, which went away. And, uh, since then, it's remarkable that you can kind of see some of these connections in this water culture start to not be maintained in the same way or maybe because we don't have the resources, uh, since Clark left. And now Buchanan is, amidst another revitalization and these, these connections to water start to become important again. So this is really the opportunity, you know, when you look at, um, Buchanan, this is essentially the, the northwest frontier of the city. You know, you start to look at it and you start to say, well, the city controls the red. Um, and then we have one or two landowners that control the yellow. And then we have a utility that, uh, may have some, um, that could be a potential partner with us. And very, and we have maybe perhaps some sympathetic landowners, we have a trail going across the river, we have a, a, you know, a hundred and fifty acre sustainable farm nearby that that trail will connect to. This trail will now be poised to connect to Niles, and you start to think like, this is a really big opportunity for Buchanan. We could potentially with not a lot of crazy effort assemble fifty plus acres, um, in a, uh, public access, you know, start to look at how we can use it. And it really becomes, like I said, a model project for inland river communities that, that could do all these things like, you know, rain gardens, ecological restoration, removal of invasive species, things that will make the water cleaner, runoff, addressing runoff. Things that make, will make the fish habitats better and the wildlife habitats better, more efficient ways for people to access the water that, that aren't, is intrusive like boardwalks and things. So this whole best practice package starts to be pretty compelling in Buchanan. And, um, basically, how I've been marketing it is we have this opportunity to take steps towards this vision of a, a mini national park type of conspiracy in Buchanan. And so, and this is not far off from our, our past culture, like, the more people I talk to about, um, riverfront fests, fishing contests, boating culture. These are all things that Swinney's Marine, these are all things that, uh, you know, the Northsiders, uh, talk about going down to the river and fishing. You know, this was like a way of life, so really, how can we get back to this opportunity? Um, so these are some, I was trying to get across, uh, some of the, these were some fishermen down there, uh, I was trying to get across like status quo of this, uh, asset that we have. Scott Dessenberg helped me out with all the flora and fauna, the species, Mike said it was a designated trout stream. You know, that, that suddenly is a compelling story, you know, what, all these, uh, these, uh, saw after fish species, the wildlife, and, um, designated trout stream. Just more kind of status quo, this is what it looks like, um, you know, if, if you go across the river and look at this part, it, it's the best piece of river access property nearby on the river, so, uh, it's just, it's for some reason, it's just not, well, and I'll get to several reasons why it may not be used. There is a boat launch down there, um, it's fishing. This is the opportunity, under-leveraged waterways, potentially fifty acres of land. You know, this could take five, ten, fifteen years, but once a seed is planted, let's take steps towards the vision. Let's keep in line for every Fish and Wildlife grant, every Michigan National Resources Trust Fund grant, why? Cause we have a master plan now. And, you know, the sooner that we can get this vision out there, sell it, and then instill the confidence in the funding agencies that we will implement, the more, then the money will start to boost up. We'll get money for this, that project, that project. We're always following this master plan. I'm proposing that we put together a committee that would look at, uh, this, this opportunity, um, and how we could assemble and use this land long-term to really reclaim Buchanan's waterfront culture. One of the urgent issues right now is that access is severely limited to this amazing asset we have. There's a point three mile road, takes you down to the river, it's one or two storms away possibly from failure. It's something that has to be maintained almost not a weekly or storm by storm basis, because it wasn't built the right way. And because somebody's water is, can't, it's too much for the road and it, it's not a sustainable solution. So what happens is this, this is what happens. And this, and so, half the people that wanna go down there will turn around. It's not inviting, you can't take, you can't really walk down there half the time, certainly biking, unless you're mountain biking. So there's just a severe access problem, so that vision that we wanna get to on this mini national park concept is really contingent upon access. So the access issue has become really the urgency here, and that's where I was explaining to the, these, uh, in these breakout groups. So maintaining sustainable public access on this road is paramount. So we got into discussions about, well, what could we do down there? Well, the no brainers are shoreline stabilization, removal of invasive species, replanting ecological species, efficient use of access. And, you know, what's the appetite for Buchanan? Do we want kayaks? Do we want handicap accessible kayaks? Do we want more boats? Do we want a better boat launch? Do we want protecting, do we want camping? These are all the things that could be explored in a master plan discussion, um, and, uh, at the same time, employ these best practices. Like, if we rebuild this road and re-engineer it, what are the trade-offs that we could do, uh, by providing, providing perhaps rain gardens or perpious pavement or, uh, grasses and shrubberies and trees that, that can alleviate, uh, uh, this runoff and drainage, these drainage issues? So there's a myriad of best practices that we could employ, boardwalks, uh, being one of them, boardwalks, uh, allow more efficient, uh, tr- access to the water, but they also protect the environment. So that's kind of a win-win, where can we look for this win-win? So, and depending on the agency that you're going to, a lot of times they'll guide you to what they're calling the intersection of engineering and nature-based solutions. So that's how you get access to all the money. So you could get access for maybe road improvement, but at the same time, you're putting rain gardens, ecological restoration, all these other best practices that open up other fucking doors. So I got a lot of good feedback from these scientists, and I, I, to be honest, like, I really felt like our project was competitive on this playing field. And could be competitive in whether it's a, a state of, uh, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant, could be National Fish and Wildlife. So, um, I just wanted to catch everybody up on this opportunity. You know, these are some of the project goals, but the long-term vision is just some of fifty acres, draft vision here, that is accessible to the public on Buchanan's north, northern banks of the St. Joseph River, while employing shoreline stabilization, best practices, nature-based solution, public access, universal access, and all these. And then basically, the idea is to re- really restore the, these opportunities with a special interaction with, uh, our, our na- natural resources. So, um, I let them know that a lot, the seed for this concept was really planted in the Andrews Plan, where we look at the relationship of access versus nearby, um, development, uh, opportunities in, uh, certainly this parcel, uh, the Moier parcel, and also the relationship with the river to the Northside neighborhood. And some of the concepts that were, uh, introduced, you know, if anybody knows about the Glean River Walk in New Buffalo, it's pretty magnificent, um, and, uh, you know, that was paid for with Potawatomi casino money, but, um, our opportunity is great separation. We have bluffs up here and we have landing down there. How could you make connections from, you know, being able to harness this magnificent view up here then being able to actually access all the way down to the landing where you could kayak and, and have these amazing experiences in Buchanan? And these are just some of the ideas that, um, were discussed, um, in my prior community, I, uh, was part of a project, it was an award-winning project. It was a ADA accessible kayak launch. And while that's really cool for ADA, it also means just it was a really awesome, easy to use kayak launch for everybody, including ADA, um, needs. But, you know, this is a discussion we can have, uh, um, what do we wanna do down there with our access? And of course, the, the access is back to our culture, but more so back to quality of life, um, in Buchanan, back to the economic development opportunities that this type of project would drive to the energy that this vision, even if we're not done with it, that we're moving towards it, what it would do to the nearby parcels that are targeted for redevelopment. What it does is it says to any developer, the city has a big vision, they're thinking big, this is the place to be, I wanna build something or do something, uh, do my project here. So, um, that is the end of this, the, uh, I just, so I did move forward and apply for the Great Lakes Saint Lawrence Initiative, uh, project funding, uh, for the road, restoration of the road, but I have a feeling that there would be more opportunities for these other, um, projects. And it's, this is an opportunity that we could set up for next grant cycles for National Fish and Wildlife. Actually, I, I applied for National Fish and Wildlife this project this year, so we'll hear on those two Great Lakes, National Fish and Wildlife. Next year, we'll have a discussion, can we slate this for Natural Resources Trust Fund or do we do something else? But, um, sooner or later, I think that, um, we're gonna have a master plan, it's gonna be a competitive project, and we can just keep upping every grant cycle, get it in, get it in. In five years, in ten years, we may have an amazing asset, because we follow a kind of a vision and program. So that's that project, uh, I think there was one other item on tonight's agenda. Last year, and actually two other. Last year, and actually two others. Last year at this time, Congressman Fred Upton had a community projects appropriation opportunity. And we applied for it, for the DPW. And he didn't, we weren't selected. They selected ten projects, we weren't one of them. This year, I just heard from his office today that April eighteenth is the deadline. And we have the opportunity to submit. Again, perhaps we could resubmit the DPW project to be considered for funding. Or we could submit another project. There's other, also there's US delegation. I think Heather's been in touch with Senator Peters and...
Yeah, if you want, I can go through the resolutions because I only prepare it right before the meetings. This was sort of the last minute, so Rich hasn't even had a chance to go through them.
I just, I just want to add one thing.
Yeah.
Is it possible to get a resolution for Upton too?
Yes, yep, on the agenda, there's some, two separate resolutions.
Okay, good.
I'll go through those. So the first resolution is a request for a resolution of support for the DPW building's construction, which I'm recommending that I submit to Senator Gary Peters. The second one is a resolution of support for the riverfront boardwalk and boat launch improvements, which were just discussed, that I'm recommending that we submit to Senator Debbie Stannenbaum. And then the third resolution is the resolution of support for McCoy's Creek Trail Extension Number Five, which would connect, so the most recent extension, that would be going out towards River St. Joe. It would connect there and go up Walton Road, connecting to the Niles Trails, so that we're connected to the Michigan Indian Trail. And that's the one that I recommend we submit to Congressman Fred Upton's office as that particular one has been already received by and from the surrounding communities, Buchanan Township, Niles, and Southwest Michigan Planning. And they've been working with myself and Rich. We've had some Zoom meetings with representatives from those communities to do a joint submittal. After reviewing last year's approvals, it was decided by Southwest Michigan Planning that that was the best strategy. It seemed that Upton's office really liked ones that showed multi-jurisdictional community support. So we feel like this is probably the best option.
Before you guys go into that, I just want to update you on the submittal of the McCoy's Creek Trail Extension to River St. Joe brewery project. That was submitted on April first to the Natural Resources Trust Funds for three hundred thousand. We are feeling very, we feel like we put together a great application. They did get back to us with some questions and clarification, and we returned it. So now we wait on that. But the, I really don't think we could have put together a better application than we did. So I feel great about it. And then we'll just continue to pound the pavement with the US delegation on these other resolutions. And there's other, our deadlines, one is May twenty-eighth, I believe, coming up. We'll try to submit for that. If anybody sees money available and deadlines, let us know. And communication is, is great. And we'll do our best to put, to put the best application forward, resources and not...
Yeah, and that's the thing. I think it needs to be stated how much hard work and dedication Rich has put into these three very extensive grant applications that were all due at roughly the exact same time. And I want to commend you for that hard work because you put in a lot of hours and a lot of time and really researched these very well, and I'm very pleased in doing that. Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm available for any other questions if anybody has any. Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
So let's start with, sorry, with your question.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. Did, did we have to have a motion to table this verging thing?
Oh, yeah, I'm just...
We never did that.
I think that's because we just decided not to take action on it. That's okay.
Okay, so we are, we didn't want to take action.
Thank you, though.
I didn't know cable needed that, keeping up the circle.
Let's start with the resolution of support for the DPW building construction. Would someone like to make a motion?
This is my, I move to approve the resolution of support of the DPW building construction project grant request to Senator Gary Peters.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Here.
Thank you. And support of the riverfront boardwalk, boat launch improvements?
Sean, I'm going to approve the resolution of support for the riverfront boardwalk and boat launch improvement projects, grant request to Senator Debbie Stannenbaum.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Here.
Thank you. And then item C, resolution of support for McCoy's Creek Trail Extension Number Five?
Sean, I'm going to approve the resolution, the resolution of support for McCoy's Creek Trail Extension Number Five, grant request to Representative Fred Upton.
Thank you, is there support?
This is my, I'll support.
Thank you, is there a call please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Thank you. We're moving on to unfinished business. Reconsideration of ordinance concerning the property maintenance code.
So we met on Saturday and discussed the property maintenance code, the highlighted portions. I was going to try to draft some recommendations. I did not get time with the meetings that I had today and some other issues that came up that were unexpected. So unfortunately, I don't have recommendations for you. I don't know if you guys want to discuss that or just table it in the next meeting.
How many things do we have to go through?
There's several.
I may have read this good or...
I mean, if, if it's okay with you, I'd rather have the recommendations than than just, I mean, we can sit here and go through it.
Yeah, no, that makes total sense to me, so that's fine.
No, no action.
And thank you for, for taking those recommendations, Rich. So that being said, let's move down to consider approving, oh, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken. First reading of ordinance, twenty twenty-two, the open verging, open verging order?
Yes, I believe there was some point of discussion that we wanted to go over at least one section of it. If the fire department had heard feedback from a commissioner, that maybe we want to consider not using diameter and maybe using a different measurement for how we're setting the guidelines for how large the...
What's it say now?
It's three feet and a half currently.
Oh.
So that'd be cylindrical, required, instead of long to one across.
Right. So what are we wanting to change it to? Sorry.
Oh, that would be also your guys' discussion if anyone had a recommendation for a reference.
I just would want to see it changed, so make sure it would encompass the right language for square or long to one across on this one. You could put in the language if that would be, whatever it takes to square or four.
Because, I mean, diameter is the measurement across. It's basically circumference is the part around. So, I mean, you can still use it for a square or a different shape, but... I just said no, there was a better, better way when we were giving you guys the verging.
Well, that's what I was going to ask about, working additions from IRG or Forest TV?
I was just saying. So the ordinance was put together in conjunction with Keith Adams, code enforcement, Dick Mann, and myself. So the three-foot diameter is what the fire ordinance is. So that's where we kind of came up with that three-foot diameter. Where that came from, okay?
Sure. Yeah, that's...
It's good.
I mean, do they make like, do they provide a, do they provide a four-five diameter?
Yeah, a lot of people custom make, um...
Right. That's what I, I'm scared to say, but is there a way to take away the measurements and, and hammer down more on a safe verging thing? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
I know what you're trying, I know what you're trying to say, but if we don't have some kind of measurement, then next thing you know, we have a big old bonfire out back and that creates...
Well, that's what I was, but, I mean...
We need to kind of narrow it down to some kind of measurement because again, we don't want someone having a big old brush fire back there and creating issues because then we're going to get called and the fire department's going to get called. And what we're trying to do with this ordinance is, is make it where people can enjoy having a bonfire, having an outside fire in their backyard. So that's what this kind of sparked this whole thing. So if we can come down with some kind of ordinance so people know what to do, most people are going to follow those, and we're not showing up and having to interrupt somebody's party that they're having in the back or the fire department get called out and it costs us the city money. So we're really looking at trying to have something that is respectable to everybody, that they understand, the fire department understands, the police department, and the citizens. So that's kind of why we're kind of pushing this. The diameter, again, was something that Chief Adams came up with, so that you guys is calling.
You probably don't have this number because it's on the spot, but how many fire, like, fire pit issues did we have last year?
How many, I don't know, but we get quite a few, you know. In the summertime, when it gets nice, people are out and we have neighbors calling because they're not aware of the ordinance and they think something is bigger than what it really is. And again, if we could educate the community on what's legal and what's not, I think that's going to solve our problems with as many calls, going to cut those down. And again, the residents know how big a head to fire.
Can we, can we just add language? You had mentioned picking out the measurements. I think the measurements are necessary, I do agree on that, but add additional language to say that they're professionally built versus a store-bought. I, I don't know, I don't know if that even, if, because you can clearly tell when somebody has a metal, at River St. Joe, they've got established size.
If you, it talks about being made of metal concrete brick, pre-made upright ring pit design for the purpose of a recreational fire. That's, that's in there.
I mean, I like that. I, I do like that terminology.
Yeah.
Made for the... I can honestly, that's how I build mine, based on that. Verging, we won't just personally have it violate this ordinance. Let me say that I did not... I started early for it. Deservedly, so.
Yes.
On the record, deservedly so. I like to see it at five feet, but I'm, I think you can be responsible at three feet as well. I'm just selfish at that. I'm comfortable with going at five feet as well. You went on the fire department, yeah.
Well, I know. Like Tim talked about, usually the fire department never really got called out. What happens is they call the police department, they call the fire chief, you know, and you make that determination from there whether to call the fire department or not. There's been instances, one I was in charge of. A guy had the city hall called, and they could see the smoke from up on Forest Street. Went up there, the guy says, hey, I'm, this is, I'm cooking hot dogs. I said, yeah, then they went, fire up, you know, right now. He says, I can do this. And I says, yeah, so can I. So, but anyway, probably, I don't know, a five-foot ring, I would, you know, they saw them down here. I'm trying to visualize three foot as opposed to five foot. I think if, if we, if we... No. That was a consensus is build it to five foot. I don't think there would probably be a lot of... turmoil with that, but, you know.
Does the ordinance require a car or a tire?
They're not subject to...
Is it such as twenty feet, how many structures?
Right, so we don't want it closer than twenty feet with any structure away from vehicles and different types of gas and liquids and stuff like that.
You think, everybody's thinking in town. What if a person has several acres, which are a lot big, one town, several acres, who could accompany a bigger lot, bigger fire pit, or a larger, you know, just a family gathering, you know?
Yeah, you said they wanted to go...
Like a summer party.
Right, they'd go down and break it.
Yeah, so the five feet, why you need a small foot?
Then smaller home order. I like where you're going with that. It's then smaller home, home order, think with a, a ten-foot fire pit.
I mean, that's where it's...
I mean, I drove this in pretty, I mean, that's, I had more layers.
But you're right, though, because then somebody with two acres can build a four. You can build a, and then you can build a quarter with a fire pit.
And you have...
That's a good point. It went out. There is a new one this. I'm enjoying it, yeah. I think the ordinance is a great...
Somebody's got a very small backyard.
So I'm really pleased, though, that we're formalizing it because I had a lot of frustration when I went through this. I couldn't find the data, the size requirements, stuff. Now I bought one at the hardware store, so I didn't have to deal with it. It wasn't, I dug a hole. I dug a hole.
Twelve feet.
Yeah. So the big one was, the bigger one was where I...
Five, five foot, I just bought one.
Yeah. You have five foot down there, so we buy them at the hardware store.
Yeah, I just bought one at the hardware store. Came with a great, great. It's three hundred ninety-five dollars for both of them.
It's sixty inches?
Yeah.
I think I might get close to that, too, that's why.
Yeah.
If they settle it down to sixty inches, it's going to be hard to say.
And you're hanging on the window at the hardware store.
Yeah.
Just to make it a little easier on you guys, we're not looking at, we're just looking at a size so we can show up and say, yes, this is here within the ordinance. So if you're worried about the, between three and five foot, I don't think it's going to make that big a difference. It really isn't. We just want to make sure that there's a number out there for the citizens to say, hey, I can't be any bigger than five foot.
And that's what I think of for someone with the hardware store. It goes to show that someone thinks they're safe because they're making it to sixty inches. So if I'm hearing you have three feet and five, it's not a safety difference.
So that's all we have to change in that is, as opposed to three to five, I'm quite sure that... If that's what you're being hung up on, I, I think that's not that big of a difference.
Better than you recovering.
So do, is this something we didn't take action or you just needed to know about the, you have the six inches?
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve first reading of the open ordinance. And with the changes of three diameters to five diameters under, under section A one A, uh, from the ordinance. Is that word? Okay.
Thank you, is there support?
How can I get a copy of that?
This is my, I'll support.
Could we roll call please?
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Here.
Okay, let's move down to first reading of the regarding parking ordinance. It seems like we needed to discuss some fees for that, or no?
Yes, similarly, there were fees. We wanted to see if you guys had feedback on what associated ticket amounts and that sort of thing you guys were looking for.
So I have a question on the ordinance as itself. So what exactly is our enforcement mandate going to be there to want to take in there?
Sure.
We're not chopping tires, is that correct?
No, we're not chopping tires at this time, no.
Okay.
So this ordinance was presented to you by the city attorneys a few months ago. I think you guys got a chance to read it. It was presented to me, I looked at it. It did not really fit our city. There was a lot of stuff in there that really just didn't pertain to the city of Buchanan. There was a lot of stuff in there that really just didn't pertain to the city of Bucano. So I, with the permission of uh city manager Grace, we, I looked at it, kind of rewrote it over, um taking some of the things out. It was a twelve pages, down to eight pages now, um that fits what we do, how our ordinances are here in the city. So that's what you have in front of you. Uh it's just kind of a revised ordinance of what the city attorney did. Uh one of the things that um is taken out and it was uh something that the attorneys, both the ones we have now plus the current ones, was the three hour parking with the employees. Uh we were advised uh by multiple attorneys to make sure that uh we took that out because we can't be singling out employees or employers or business owners downtown um because they can't park in the downtown three hour parking. So that's one of the big changes that were taken out of here. The other changes is that we modified where we have our permit parking or overnight permit parking because we added different spaces. We added some over by the uh post office. We added some in the uh old senior center, which is a city center now. Uh so we updated that information into the policy. Uh we we put in some verbiage where we got definitions of what uh certain words are and uh that's kind of what we have in there. Those are the changes that I made to uh the ordinance. Any other questions? Reference ordinance, I know.
So we have three hours. That was still we started.
That is, that is three hours between nine and uh nine and five, Monday through Friday.
Correct, okay.
Great. Then that just matches the old ordinance.
So I'm looking at, did you guys catch the session on the fees?
The fees are.
Because that was something I.
The highest one is twenty-three, right?
Yes.
I I'd much like to see us bump it to twenty-five at least.
Okay, so we're, alright, so.
If they miss their dates like it does now, like I'm all for it. I wanna set a precedent on using the public parking spaces that are off the street for longer term parking. Like, I don't even like it personally, three hours on the main street. The way the ordinance, I just wanna make sure people are parking on Main Street for more than they're allowed to, attacking those businesses. Feel it a little bit and maybe they won't do it again.
I agree.
It just has practice to strongly encourage long-term parking off the street.
If you're talking, what, a hundred steps maybe?
And let it be known, I mean, this is for the public. We've met with people from South Haven just to, for other meetings and Niles as well. They have the exact same. They said it was hilarious and we didn't even talk about it. It comes up.
Every, every community.
Every community.
Parking issues.
And it's, I, it's amazing how how it becomes such an issue.
Now, part of that responsibility that we're already talking about is making sure we have proper signage. Don't people where we want them too far. So it's not because, oh, you're getting tickets, you're getting tickets. So we are responsible for signage.
I would agree with that. And then let's worry about the three. Thanks for that. I'm more worried about people who park in front of fire hydrants, in front of the yellow curves and park backwards on going the wrong way and doing U-turns and all the ridiculous.
So, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of issues going on in the downtown. So three hour parking is just one of the many things that our officers go down and enforce down.
What is our fine now? It's like five dollars?
It's five dollars. If if you go.
Fifteen days is ten and thirty days is.
I mean, I'd personally like to start at twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
No.
Thirty days plus.
Attached is a copy of one of our tickets and that gives you the parking fines that we have now. So uh most of them are five dollar tickets. Um also attached is a neighboring communities. So I reached out to Barron Springs, New Buffalo, St. Joe, Bridgman and Niles of what they're charging uh for their tickets. Uh so you kind of have that as an idea of what uh other communities are charging for parking tickets and.
What is Niles, they write there?
Niles right there is under state. They they really, uh talking to the chief there, they really don't enforce a whole lot. But if they do write a ticket, they run it, write it under state law. So they they don't really um do the ordinance enforcing like we do.
How is that different?
Uh but state ticket's gonna be a lot more expensive. So.
But the revenue doesn't go to the community?
Right, it doesn't go to the community.
I mean, I'm not really looking to, you know, as a, as a, as a, as a potential rent maker. I'm talking to people who put parking in front of fire hydrants and yellow.
And that's what we want. We're not trying to, you know, spend money here. We're just trying to make sure when people come downtown, they they understand what the ordinances are, where they can park and where they can't park, um and what they can do, they can't do U-turns and those kind of things. So we're trying to enforce that and um I I wanna leave it up to you if you think a five dollar ticket's gonna be able to.
Well, I think, you know, I think the higher the fee, the more likely are they are to come back to Bucano the next time and double think where they're gonna park and and say, maybe I don't wanna park in front of that yellow curb this time. If it was twenty-five dollars and less, like.
It may be, you know, it may be local parking in front of these businesses and attacking their ability to make sales.
Yeah, we write tickets to out-of-towners and uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is three hours based on like, we have specific benefits going on? Is that kind of why we settled on three hours or?
The three hours was uh something that the commission way before us, way before my time, as long as I can remember, it's been three hour parking down there. I'm not sure the decision and why they uh based it on three hours. It is a kind of a common timeframe. Uh it's it's uh long enough for someone to come in and and, you know, get their hair done at the salons and uh go to the coffee shop and and sit around and have a cup of coffee and those kind of things. So we wanna also make it friendly and and people can come into town and and spend some time downtown. We don't wanna make it to the point where they get, all they gotta worry about is getting back to their car and moving on before they get a ticket. We want them to come into town, explore our town, see the businesses that we have and and enjoy those businesses down there. So I I think that three hours is is a good timeframe.
I'm most concerned about the timeframe than I am just the illegal parking in places that should be parked.
Well, I think one of the things we need to add eventually, maybe is after the streetscape and all that, but similar what you see at the mall. There's a a sign there with a map that says you are here and there's parking over here, signs, uh the mill, the trail, pointing out everything that people can do and see while their hair.
Sure. No, that's a great idea. I I do think that, you know, when we do the streetscape, I I've got some new ideas for some signage downtown. Uh again, that's what we want. We want people to come in, know what's going on, know where to go, know where to park. And uh that's, that's a great idea to uh show off other um resources that we have here in town that people maybe wanna.
What's uh, what's the reason in front of cannabis? Okay, so there's always people parking in the yellow zone. What is the reason for the extended yellow?
Well, the yellow is, is.
Or, I'm sorry?
Is is for when people come off of Main Street, if it's a semi or a school bus, they have to make a wide left turn. And and if you've got a car parked there, your school buses and your semis that's making local deliveries sit down there can't make that turn.
On the Main Street down there.
Yeah, you gotta have those wide turns for those big trucks, including the DPW guys.
We just eliminated, maybe go one more.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, so I I figured he had his hand up for that. But that's, that's why we have uh yellow zones and each yellow zone that we have is, there's, there's a reason for it. It's just not that they, they painted so you gotta be fifteen feet back from an intersection so you're not, you know, blocking the the sight of somebody trying to make a turn. So all those yellow uh areas that we have downtown, they're there for a reason.
Now, is this ticket, if we go with twenty-five, the same for parking in the yellow or is that different than just a standard parking ticket?
So what it's always makes it nice for law enforcement if we kind of figure on a number. And and then that way, we're not trying to decide that this is a ten dollar ticket, if this is a twenty-five dollar ticket or something like that.
And this group of.
Yeah. So, you know, like right now, we have five dollar tickets. That's what most of the violations are. We do have a a ten dollar violation. And also, as you know, is if they don't take care of the ticket after five days, it increases. So it just continues to to go up. So um you guys can, again, decide on whatever your um citations are are going to be. Uh to put us in the area around with the other communities, a ten dollar citation would put us in that area. We're a bit, a little bit below, but that's a fifty percent increase. Your guys' decision, but my recommendation is that we at least increase it to ten dollars.
And then take the no permit to fifteen, like just take those each up by five and then, of course, we, we just double.
Yeah, I just don't think, they aren't, compared to the communities that are on that list, our traffic is distinctly different than those communities.
So how many permitted parking spots do we have down here?
We are way under than we were last year. I I couldn't tell you, but I I know we're under twenty.
Permits.
Permits that we handed out, yeah.
You're under twenty?
I believe so, yes. I can give you an exact number, uh but I was talking to Diana and we were just like, something was kind of off of why we did not have as many permits this time of year as we did last year. So. Not sure why that is.
What's funny is plow those parking lots with all the non-permitted people parked in those spots and then wonder why they're not parked in the permitted spots. Because they just park and then you can't plow the parking lot. And then people complain because most of those, all these parking spots are full of snow. Well, they were all covered with cars this morning. So.
And and understand the permits are only up until six o'clock, so.
And his nighttime guys really hate me at two o'clock in the morning when I say, hey, come give these guys tickets.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we make a higher first time fee, it's going to keep people from doing what they shouldn't be doing.
I absolutely agree.
I like that one. I like twenty-five. I really did. I think our traffic warrants a higher fee. We can come back to this and if there's a public rate, we can adjust it.
I mean, we can all.
But I think the businesses would appreciate how their fee is on what I see all over Facebook.
Well, there's enough complaints about.
Our.
Yeah.
And the shift were taking real life.
And real life. And a sergeant.
And do you wanna see the the similar model where it doubles?
What is, it it doubles in how quick? Five days?
So, that, if we did twenty-five across the the board for that, you you're gonna have to kind of figure out what we're gonna do if they don't pay the ticket. So there's uh an increase after so many days, if you've got that in front of you there that uh.
Yep. What do you do now? Do we warn out of court or?
No, after, after, no warrants, no warrants. After thirty days, then we send it over to the district court and then the district court takes care of it with court costs, fines and and stuff like that. So then it's obviously a higher fee, so.
I'm more likely to ignore a five dollar ticket than a twenty-five dollar ticket of that.
Yeah, me too. And then I'm all for it, it's the course and getting it out of your, getting it out of your.
And that's what we do with with every ticket that's not paid. After thirty days, it it goes over to the court and the court takes care of it.
So we just all twenty-five across the board and keep it simple for.
I think so. I mean, a traffic violation would be twenty-five dollars. A dollar is not ridiculous, anyway, but it's enough to make someone go. I got, I got one new date, Notre Dame. It was like the first time they were gonna take it there and it was, it was sixty dollars.
Yeah.
Well, they're not paying.
Yeah, they gotta pay for that.
They got a new. They got to pay for that new football. Now it's other new buildings, the stadium.
Jerry Flotter and I got one two years ago there.
So we're not approving pricing in this anyways.
No, this will be approved in first reading, but we need to know if you guys price it, so I have to prepare the resolution first.
So we could say we'd approve this with the fee structure and just.
No, you have to rest the fee.
Or.
Yeah, I'll just bring the resolution for fees next time, yeah. I ask you to know what you guys wanted in it.
Go to the twenty-five and then after a week, are we, are we raising it?
I think we, do we all like it doubles just like the current structure is now and it'll hurt if you don't pay attention to it.
I was, I was gonna say maybe fifteen.
I was gonna say.
What?
Take off, take off five, you go to fifteen, so doubles it.
Oh.
I said make them hurt.
Well, that's what I mean. There's a really easy way to not have to pay fifty dollars.
And what's five dollars when they're already over forty, forty-five? You might as well spend the extra five, a whole fifty. You surely don't wanna get to a hundred, right?
Makes the math easier.
Right.
And it helps, I mean, there is an option for folks who are out of town and get a ticket to pay online, so it's not like they have to come back physically. Which used to be the case until relatively recently. We updated the website to give them that option. So there's, there's less excuse to not pay, if that makes sense.
So they can go online and pay for it.
Can we have that, I know that you're gonna be having to get new cards anyway.
Right, so.
Can we put that uh information on?
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Because that just eliminates it. I mean, we can still put, post it about the change, but then have it, you can't pay online and so on and so forth.
So once we get this worked out, we get the fees and everything, uh looking at kicking this off probably like July one because we gotta order new tickets. We wanna re, have to put the fees on there and those take a little bit, but uh so that's, that's my thought is uh July one, push out this new information so everybody's aware of it and then start at that point.
Make sure we get some of all the business owners down there, I think, or they know what's coming.
Gotta get new tickets because we we do have new information we wanna put on there how to um go about paying them online because we do have a lot of people that uh are out of the area, you know, out of the state, they come in and if they get a ticket, it's an opportunity for them to pay it once they get back and not have to mail it in to us.
Do the banner, don't be a jerk, park in care.
Yeah, there is that.
Welcome to the next place.
So can we give a motion to that one?
So I'll move to approve the first reading of the revised parking ordinance.
The accused support?
I'll support.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Swen?
Yes.
Dennisson?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Here, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, uh consider resolution twenty-two point oh four slash four thirty, resolution to negotiate the summer school tax collection fee.
This is something that happens annually. It's a standard mechanism that needs to be done so we can finalize those talks with the school districts to get the tax work ready.
Somebody might like to make a motion to.
Sean, make a motion to approve the resolution two zero two two dot zero four slash four three zero.
The accused support?
This is money I'll support.
The accused, do we have a roll call, please?
Dennisson?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Thank you. I know me, portable toilet bids?
Yes.
So we have two bidding bids to consider for the portable toilets. One is for Pride at seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. The other is LRS Recycles at nine thousand six hundred and detailed breakdowns are in packets.
Who do we use currently?
Uh Pride.
We still like Pride, Mike? Mike?
Why?
We still like Pride for portable toilets?
Uh yeah, I I think Pride gave us a better bid. They already know where our stuff is and like it's.
I mean, you're.
We don't have any complaints about them not being emptied or cleaned or.
I think Pride has done us a very good job.
I think they have, I mean, they have.
At the time, every time we call them and ask them to do something extra for us, they jump right on it.
I think they were the only bid last year.
They were the only bid last year, so I, I feel like, you know, and they're two thousand dollars cheaper.
I like that.
Somebody like to make a motion?
So I'll move to approve the portable toilet bid for Pride, the portable toilet company, at seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
I'll support. Do we have a call, please?
Weeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennisson?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, consider approving uh for water sewer rate study?
Yes, so you may recall from last meeting, um we sat in front, now Andy Campbell from Baker Tilly was here at that time to discuss a different matter, but um presently we're looking to consider a nine thousand dollar per fund, so eighteen thousand total, to do an enhanced water rate study, um water sewer rate study, excuse me, and that will take into consideration the bond, USDA bonds that we've applied for to calculate what those will need to be once they figure out the smoothing and figure out how much we'll have to increase rates to cover those bond payments. So that's a necessary thing for us to get approval from the USDA. Uh we have had good results from Baker Tilly in the past, and I do recommend approval of the request.
Do you, do you know the last time we did one? I'm just curious.
It was, it wasn't that long ago, but it was before I was here. So it was, I think, at least two years, a year and a half, two years ago.
It would be an unbelievable amount of changes that have happened in our community. Um I think this would be really valuable.
Yeah.
Especially with all the grow operations that are using water and uh the new businesses we have in town that are using more water and we have more full houses that are.
That's exactly right. Anytime you have a big change in your customer base, which we have a.
Yeah, and we have a new water system now. I just feel like it.
We don't have the rights or anything to get our money for the product. We have to do this. She said it's requiring community.
I think it would give us a lot of information that would be very useful. I think it would give us a lot of information that would be very useful. We're looking at rates and.
And this type of data helps us make sure that the rates that we're charging are fair and equitable to our residents.
Right, and I, and that's where, that's where I was going because there's so much that has changed in the last couple of years. I think it's really invaluable. Question about that one?
Eighteen thousand gets captured in our enterprise calculation?
Yes, correct. They've come out of the fund.
I'll move to approve the bid from Baker Tilly for nine thousand dollars per fund.
Is there support?
This is money I'll support.
Give a roll call, please.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Okay, item B is to consider appointments changes to the membership of the ZBA. I don't know if this is moving to work day or.
You had the application.
Yeah, I, I, we have an upcoming need for a BZA, CBA meeting. I believe that's coming up. I thought it would be a good opportunity to fill a vacancy on that seat. So I believe that there's a person who is.
We were supposed to have applications and we thought we'd have the applications in time, but we just received it during the meeting.
They're filled out?
So we put it out there just in case, but yeah, mainly Mr. Murphy needs, he was doing a call out for his ZBA members.
So we have one and I, I don't think you would mind if I mentioned who it was. If you want to do it, we can. Upper him or not upper him, if you're all in agreement with that. It's Joe Kruger who just bought Red Bud Hardware. Who is, is trying to get involved more in the community, but didn't want to be on a board where he was going to be very busy because he's doing two jobs right now. And I told him, we, that board has only met once since I've been here, so he felt like that was a good place for him to land.
It's probably on their project, wasn't it?
No.
That's the one that just got done a meeting, didn't it? And then they have another meeting in July for appeals. I don't know zoning board.
So, so we take on variances. Like if someone wanted to get permitted and they have a special reason that they can't get their project to fit inside of our ordinances, they come and ask us for variance.
Yeah.
So it very, it very rarely happens.
How many OTs do they have?
We have one because Mr. Vansky was just removed.
That's right.
So.
Who's that?
Anybody like to make a motion to appoint an individual to the ZBA?
Joe Kruger?
Joe Kruger.
I'd move to appoint Joe Kruger to the zoning board administration.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Give a roll call, please. You can give it to anyone.
Weeden?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes. Sorry, and just to be completely transparent, the only reason that he texted it to me was because she told me before the meeting she hadn't gotten it, so I texted him and said, hey, what's up? Where's your, and actually his response was, dang it, I get it and it's sat on my desk. I'll drop it off tomorrow. There you go. Okay. So item B, consider entering closed session pursuant to NCL fifteen two sixty eight, section eight one D and H to consider the purchase or lease of real property.
So I move to entering a closed session pursuant of NCL one five dot two sixty eight, section eight, one D and H.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Give a roll call, please.
Doughty?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
COVID something, that's right.
Do you have any idea how long we're in this session?
Looking at this tree.
For the old ordinance or the new ordinance? So anything you convert basically is firewood.
They didn't say the ordinance and the.
Now what they didn't, um, have to give the city manager, because I think once they approved the first. Does that make sense? But the leaves and everything you can't burn. No, new ordinance, you can't burn enough firewood. Yeah, so you just have to burn firewood. No leaves, no brush, can't cut down trees and burn.
No building material.
Just cut up firewood. Does that make sense? You look confused. I'm just trying to help.
Well, that's what he had, like wood and stuff like that. So that came from thirty years in the township.
Okay, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a old life. Because what it does is when you put the leaves and everything on there, it makes all this smoke. We're not like, you know, we're in a city here, so you got neighbors that are real close. You live up on Liberty Street, right?
No, it's on, it's your front street right by the Legion.
I think I'm, I'm not gonna hang around.
Whose place is that?
Josh Mills. Well, Hillary lived there a year.
Oh, okay. Yeah, right. I love the Easter Bunny. Mm-hmm. You got the big blue house?
That's hers and I'm the house that nobody sees. It's a.
Yeah, right next to the Legion. Yes, down, as you come down the hill. Yes. Yeah, you can't burn leaves. That's part of the ordinance. I know, yeah. Yep. Now that ordinance, if you go onto the city website and look at open burn under the ordinances, it tells you everything. So you can go on the city website and see what the ordinance says.
Okay, that was my point if I didn't.
Yeah.
Before I get that copy.
Yep.
City website.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Okay, yeah. How are you?
There's not a shoe store in the house, right, anymore? They have shoe stores?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's gone.
There used to be a shoe store here.
Everybody buys everything online now.
Not shoes. Well, that's one thing I won't buy online, unless I've worn it before.
We eat restaurants here in town.
Hey, we're working on it. We're working on it, sir.
Hurry up.
Spring, next, next spring. I said this spring to somebody the other day. I said, that's, that's very fast.
Yeah.
No, we'll have one this, we'll have one in spring and we already have another one in plans as well, so. Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. If I don't, if I don't own, if I'm not part of five restaurants downtown in the next six years, there's a problem. But I don't know if you're familiar with Zingerman's in Ann Arbor where they, they just, and Green Bush and Sawyer.
Yep.
They just keep putting pieces and they just keep putting things everywhere. Well, that's where we come in.
Hilltop and McDonald's getting old.
Yeah.
Yep, and Gary Z's every now and then.
Well, you gotta come out and see me at River State Joe.
Lost the BMW because you can't go to BMW anymore, but it's done with the knowledge.
I might love their family names. She's from out of town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so if I want to bring my six-year-old down to the police station with some cupcakes and some things, are we allowed to do that?
Yep.
Okay.
Is this a bribe? I think it's a good idea.
Make sure you come into the police department, not the.
No, go next door.
No, though you don't have the cupcakes.
Look good until we want it.
I just want to introduce my daughter to some police officers and show them the uniform and show her what they're, what they're important because they have, uh, kids have that negative thought that you're just there to take a jail.
I'm gonna see, let's, come down Thursday.
Thursday?
Yep, Thursday before three, Officer Bree's working.
Okay.
And that way she can see a, a young lady in, in uniform.
Yeah.
And I think, and, and Bree is just amazing. Yep, and.
She can draw girls' talk, and I can draw girls' talk.
So, yeah, stop in there Thursday.
Cool.
And ask for Officer Bree. We'll, we'll get her out there. She's a good kid.
Good, good, good.
She's a.
She will talk their language and not ours.
My, my, my daughter's a future presidential. Talk to anybody, you know, she just, and that's, that's what scares me. So, you know, it's because she talks to anybody and I'd like her to make sure she, she has the proper people to talk to.
She'll not have to.
Well, when she's young now, yeah.
Married to the Harvey.
We had, we had to lock her up during COVID because she wanted to stand in the grocery cart and just have, just say hello, come touch me, say hello.
Give me a hat.
I want to shake your hand, you know, what's your kid's name? Do you have a dog?
Give me a hat, yeah.
She's, she's born of hospitality, so I mean, she gets it naturally.
I do have to come down to your house.
Yeah, come say hi. Yeah, we're, we're neighbors. I can see your house. You probably heard me chucking stuff out the second floor window, you know.
Oh, I loved watching that dumpster bit full.
It's five of them. We're getting rid of, as soon as the weather's nice, we're gonna pull one. We're out for construction material and I'm hoping in the next thirty days to be sleeping in that part of the house because it's got an apartment on the, the, we finished the apartment on the side.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, my wife and my kid and I are sleeping there and we're fixing the old part, trying to keep it as true as possible, you know. I'm not doing square nails or anything like that, but you know, we're just trying to keep it nice and. I have, I keep pulling them out. I got one on my foot the other day. It's, that's where the floor is, uh, the floor has all the original square nails in it on the side of it. It's super cool. I found the original structure of the house and my wife went down to the library and got great pictures and stories and.
What year was that built in?
Eighteen forty-nine.
Eighteen forty-nine.
So, and that was, that was one of the first ones. It was an Estes House. The Clarks lived there. I think I've met so many people that said that they rented this apartment or my mom was born there or my great-great-grandmother. The Buchanan, it was a library at one time. It was the Buchanan.
It was a library?
It was a library. It was a library. It was a Buchanan Spiritual Society, uh, the nineteen thirties. Um, it was pretty interesting stuff happened there. It's a super cool house. I've lived in a lot of old houses in life and, and this is one of my favorites. So it's super cool. Super, super cool. I'm super excited. You get to see the old wood hand-planked planks and trusses and all that fun stuff, but yeah, it's super.
I've gotta come down here. I'm gonna see it.
Yeah, it's super cool. It's super cool, yeah. The, the one floor is a little wobbly right at the moment, but we're working it one day at a time.
Don't take the character away.
We're trying not to. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It just, the house sank, you know, it lives on a hill. So, and then they put that little bitty driveway there and that caused some leaks in the basement, so, but I still have some of the old original stone foundation in there.
Great.
Yeah, there's, uh, dog prints from who knows when. There's, uh, signatures. There's numbers in the sidewalk. It's, it's super cool. I pulled some floor up and found a place that was an old porch, but they put all the original construction materials, so I was able to see everything that was through the years, old beer bottles, old wine bottles from stuff that's not even brewed anymore. You know, it's super cool.
Still into that?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I just, I pulled up a board and I'm like, I wonder what this is? And then this went, oh, nice, it's an old porch. You know, it's a hole in the floor, you know. You can see where the old original pipes were at and I still have, I don't, it's all turned off. We have all, a lot of the original wiring's in there, so it's kind of scary, but it, there's no electric going to any of it right now, so it's, uh, I'd say how it should have burned down. It really should have. I got scared a couple of times and went and started flipping breakers and then like, all right, it's time to call somebody.
Where's Mike? Where's Mike?
Right here.
It's nap time. Sure is. But you should, you really should come down to River State Joe. Everybody's welcome to town there. Come see what we got doing, give you a tour.
Okay.
We just did, we just did a subterranean auxiliary, auxiliary greenhouse system, so it's attached to a wood burning stove and then we heat it with wood and radiant heat and then it goes eight feet underground and we lined it full of logs from a different tree company and the logs retain the heat for the day and, or for the night and then we put all our tomatoes in there. It extends our growing season by three months almost. So it gets, we get the tomatoes in pots now and they get to start their, get their height and then we have to put them straight in the ground when they're four to five feet high already.
Nice.
Yeah, get those tomatoes right now. So, super cool. And we've actually, uh, we're doing all our own proteins this year, so we've partnered with local farms to do our own sausage, our own hamburgers and, and stuff like that. So we, we had a goal of five years, but we're, we're pulling it out this year, so let's see what we can do. Fint Farms, Fint Farms and Buchanan is, we're using their pork, my beer, and then, um, we're, we're getting processed and stuff and sausages are using our wine, our veggies. Got a local pasta maker that's using our, our produce to put in our pasta, so super cool projects going on down there.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we have boots if you guys don't, so we always, we'll, we'll, everybody share their boots, take care of the muddy farm, you know, and see what's going on.
You told me.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, some people do.
Have you heard of the show, you probably have, The Incredible Dr. Paul?
I think so.
My parents found it on their TV and then my husband looked it up on National Geographic channel, so it's on Disney Plus. And he's based in like, um, central Michigan up by Midland, but it's Wademan or Weathman, Michigan, and they do farm, he's a veterinarian, but he's does farm calls and everything and he puts them, they go boots in other attire to go to the farm closet.
Yeah.
Very educational and we're like hooked on it now. It's like eleven seasons or.
You should ask John Leonard about him. He worked at the search department up there. He actually knows the guy.
Ah.
Yeah.
It's The Incredible Mister?
Paul, P O L.
Disney Plus, do that for sure.
There's some times where you have to turn your head and not, don't watch it if you're sick.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
My wife worked for veterinary technician for eleven years. She was a wildlife vet, so I've seen quite a few things.
I was.
You didn't? Tell me.
I know. Well.
I had something for you to do and I come, I come in and Pam tells me, hey, she was here. I'm like, where's she at? Oh, she left.
I know what you want me to do. David empty his desk.
Oh, no, I got something else besides that. I got some shirts. I get to take some names off of them. Then you can shred. All right, you and Pam can sit up there and visit.
Good old days.
Share. It's like the good old days, yep.
Yeah. Except it'll have to be yours. I can't have a wall over by David anymore.
Why?
Because he's not here. So it'll have to be, Harvey's not, um, it'll have to be you.
Me? You and Pam do it. You two, you can sit right there and do it. Sit right in her office.
We'll have fun.
Yeah, I know you will.
Well, we'll have fun.
Yeah. I heard Franny was up there too?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. I'm glad I was gone. It just had to be a mess up there. You, Franny, Pam, all the old timers are back.
Um, he doesn't need a uniform. He needs some suspenders. He loses any more weight.
Is he getting around pretty good?
Yeah.
Good.
He had his stick with Osama with mine. Oh, yeah, I've got one.
Yeah. Did Sharon bring him or did he drive himself, which he probably shouldn't be doing?
Well, you weren't out there.
I know.
See what happens. We can get away with murder.
Yeah, old Franny. He's, yeah. I can't believe he's had two knee replacements. Had the one last year and he got this one this year.
Is that the, the school, the school officer?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like he works at Maccasim.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. I, I have some great conversations with him sitting in the schoolway.
Oh, yeah.
You're the one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I wondered if the middle school's not the oldest.
I'll tell you what, since he's not there, traffic sucks.
I know.
He's, he's a pivotal point to there.
Yep.
Yes.
I love it when he's down there.
Oh, it's awesome. That, yeah, that's the best.
You don't know where you're going.
He is into it. I'll, I'll intentionally go down there and turn the opposite way and then he goes like this. I say, hey, Franny, how are you?
You kids.
Old Franny. He's, he's something else.
My first ticket.
Did he?
Ticket, yes, he did.
Yeah.
And then he said, how did you fit between that scoreboard and that Little League home run thing? And then he said, how did you fit between that scoreboard and that Little League home run fence? With that Volkswagen. I was going from Tim Hagley's house to my mom's house and it was a lot more direct route.
Mm-hmm, going that way, huh?
It was our neighborhood and you know, that's what you, what happens when you do something, there's always, oh, there they are, how did they happen to be here now, you know?
And Franny's been around forever, I mean.
Yes. He retired, how many times now?
He was good, he was good, he was like.
He's retired, he's like, you know, his tires come back, tires come back, but yeah.
I gotta hand it to that guy though, at two o'clock in the morning when he's out in the car and he pulls on every single door that he comes up to, he literally checks.
Yeah, oh, I I I. He's got Sharon driving him around now.
No, he doesn't.
Does, I am serious, because you know, he can't get around, but he can get into this uh truck and Sharon drives him around, he checks the banks, he does all that.
Does he really still?
Yeah. Yeah. Even, yeah, even while he's on the, off on medical, she's driving him around. The other day I passed him like three times, I'm like, what are you doing? He's, I'm checking these buildings, Sharon's driving me around, and I'm like, alright.
He means it too.
He does, telling me that guy. He's like, ain't nobody gonna do it besides me, I'm like, okay, Franny.
Yes, it's great to hear you say the young, the young ones, they don't know how to do anything.
Oh, yeah, he doesn't think anybody knows how to do anything but him, yeah. Nobody can pull on that door just right.
This place is gonna fall apart when I die.
Yeah, that's what he thinks.
You're gonna find him on the bike.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, we were talking about Kendall.
Mm, mm-hmm.
The two?
Yeah.
Bree was um sitting at her desk wondering.
Yeah.
Oh, Kendall Jefferson back in the day, boy, we had some fun. Mike Ogg. You remember Mike?
I do.
Normal?
No.
He was in with Kendall Jefferson.
Who was it, Green, Phil Green?
Phil Green, yeah, holy cow.
Mine, Bob Dings, um.
Oh, wow, she's going way back.
Crane.
That's, yeah. Bob Dings was my my dare teacher.
Yeah, you're going way back.
Yeah.
Joe Crane.
Old Joe.
Ronnie Testo.
Ronnie Testo. Tom Shidiker.
Yeah, Tommy Shidiker.
Oh, Tommy.
Marty Stolpet.
Yep.
Old Clyde.
And then Clyde, yeah.
He would hit his teeth when I was hired.
Was he, yeah?
I had to leave uh, you know, Pat Hutch give me a ride in when he worked second shift or so, so I'd say, just, he'd say, no, go hitchhike, and I was like, I'm right, I'm dating your daughter, give me a ride.
Yeah, yeah, old Hutch, yeah, him too.
Ah, you guys were noisy, you kept me awake, I couldn't get my sleep. They were good though, but they were always, it was just like, they'd come out of the woodwork when I was sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, where in the heck were you guys, I mean, how'd you, how'd you know what I was doing, you know?
Yep.
Those were the good old days.
Yes, they were. Well, I don't remember those days, but.
Oh.
Yeah. It's a lot different these days.
Franny's the only one left working from the group that.
If you call that working.
Uh Sharon is still working for us, yes.
Sharon, yeah, 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 no, Franny's like the only one left in that group.
Yes.
A lot of those people passed away, well, Joe, Joe Crane's still around.
And Bob Dings.
Yeah.
Trying.
Yeah, but um, yeah.
I think Marty was the last one.
Yeah.
Besides Clyde.
Yeah.
Clyde'd be knocking on somebody's door.
Yeah, first time I met Clyde, uh I was working at the sheriff's department and I came up to Hilltop, here comes this skinny guy and he's got, you know, cowboy boots and these jeans and this cowboy shirt and and he's got this big old forty-five hanging off and I'm like, who's this guy, and they go, oh, he's just our code enforcement, and I'm like, holy cow, that's code enforcement.
We need balance.
Yeah, they don't play around here, yeah.
He put on a uniform and said, wait, straight now.
It's scary.
Always carrying that big.
I got my permit, I got my permit.
Big old hog, man. And those cowboy boots.
Reached down in that boot and pull out your misty one hundred about that long. Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, cause his his legs were only that big around, so there was a whole lot of boot there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I wonder if this conversation's on record.
It's okay.
It's all good, we got a chief here.
Yeah, it's all good. And I'd tell that story if his family was there, the family knows that story, I told it a hundred times.
They're probably, they're probably.
There's several people that get on, they're listening to the video and I wonder if they'll hear us chatting.
Yep, Clyde's an amazing guy.
That was just unfortunate, that's a big family and you start getting into the depths of the Weavers and Smiths.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's an.
And they're related to everybody, you know?
Carlsons.
Yeah.
That's right.
Ferrises.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a bunch of us.
When Clyde would start one of the newer aged cars and you didn't have to pump them to start them or step on the gas to keep them running, when you got them started, he'd turn that key, that car would start and that baby would be flat to the floor, whoa, and then Clyde would let off on iron. Had to make sure she was going.
How sweet, yeah, I haven't heard anything.
He's still around, works every Tuesday night.
Who's that?
Oh, it's on nights, he's not doing bike?
Oh, um, no, he usually, when I say nights, he's on like four to midnight or four to eleven, something like that, so he's always around. But for him on Tuesday nights.
Well, he would come in when I was on a Tuesday and hadn't heard anything, nothing, he'd run out of time, but he.
No, he's still around, he's been around for thirty plus years.
Yes.
Yeah, not a long time.
He's great for the kids too.
Kids love him.
They love him.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, he always, he's always working the sporting events, the basketball.
He was real good at the games.
Yeah.
He would come to games and.
Yeah, always up there.
I love his answer to how you doing, sweet, fantastic and amazing.
Yeah.
What's his name? You really calling that?
Yeah, we do, old Kerry. Kerry Robinson. Played football with him in high school.
Oh, did you? Yeah?
Yeah, he was a fat, him and Mike Welsh were the fastest healers in the world, they'd be hurt Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and on Thursday when we put our game. Those guys were in their best shape.
My dad tells that same story.
They were all sitting there and the.
Mike Welsh would pick his hair every day at Franny's, his apple.
Mike Welsh's hair was only surpassed by Willie Brown's.
Yeah, I've heard that story. Oh, man. That's funny.
Just couldn't get over how they could heal so fast, and neither could Wisher or anybody else, Wisher was one of our coaches, Dave Wisher. But they, he was a fast healer. Oh. And as an underclassman, I'd say, how are they getting to play, how'd they get on the field even, you know, they're they're good athletes and everything, it just, doggone, they didn't even practice Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Almost be on crutches on Monday if I didn't. He was pretty, he was in the the uh boxing club, that wasn't he?
Mm-hmm, yeah. He did that for quite a few years.
Yeah. He was always good, he'd walk to the BMW, he'd make it a quick pass, but he'd he'd walk through and always like that, I thought it was good. In the old days, it it was one of those things that uh they, you know, police officers did, they'd walk through all the taverns just to make a walk through.
Yeah.
Not a lot of time for that stuff now, well.
And when you only got one guy working, it's kinda tough.
Well, yeah, no kidding. That's why I say it by everything, we have, is that raining?
I was gonna say, is it finally raining outside?
We'd have, we have less uh.
No, it's the heaters.
Employees at every step, every every step of the way, it's just, I I just can't, compared to when I worked for the city, it was just amazing, I had so many more people here, at the Department of Public Work, cemetery's about the same, but police officers, there were just so many people, we had, you know, I don't know how we get by, and there's more things happening now, it seems like.
It's it's tough, you know, like.
Before we had, before we had about a hundred and fifty police officers and a hundred of them were women, where our mothers beat our father, we did something wrong, or turn us right in, but, no, but it was just, and the the community's not even like that as much anymore.
George, we're going, was in my class.
Yeah.
And we were threatened, we had to herself, oh, tell Georgia's dad.
I tell you what, there's nothing better than a good parent, there is nothing better.
Yep. Yeah, I was so, I was so lucky in that neighborhood.
When you turn them over to a good parent.
Yep.
I was gonna say.
I had about five fathers in my neighborhood, I didn't have a dad around and I had, boy, they have other guys made up for it, hmm.
You could go.
There was no, there was no uh threatening, they're just gonna kick your butt.
Yeah.
And then nobody would say anything, just like teachers could, do a little spanking here and there too, you know, nobody can do anything like that anymore.
Board of Education.
My old principal, my old school still had a, had that, they still technically could in Indiana up until when I was a kid. And uh you'd walk in there and he'd just have that sitting right behind you, it's like, that's just my my memento, to tell you what we still can do.
Yeah.
And then my dad told me stories about how they just pulled that out, they didn't care, they just took you all out and swatted you in the in the in the hallway, and then sometimes they'd bring kids out to watch, you know, it was an interesting time.
Yeah, you didn't, our our chief didn't have to go up in front and say, if you see something, say something.
Mm-hmm.
Cause they did, now you have to say that to get.
Called back then, people took care of those things.
They sure did.
You know, they they did, they didn't call you.
Just like they took care of their yard, it was just something they did automatically.
Yeah, they don't call you to say, hey, my uh son won't get up and go to school.
Right.
Do they call you for that?
Yeah. Parenting by the police. Yeah.
You're gonna know if my kid won't go to school.
I won't.
Cause when they get there, they won't be able to sit down and all the teachers are gonna be like, why won't you sit down? Cause I can't.
That's what I guess said, there's nothing better than a good parent. The world needs more of them.
You can tell when you're around the kids that uh, you know, are are got good parents.
My my kids at River State Joe are awesome, you know, I brought it, I brought to their attention the the police uh during the prom and dance and and Rosie Sherwood and they were all there when that happened, they said that was one of the coolest things that happened that year.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, they were super exciting, I I employ probably fifteen high school kids there.
Cool.
So we try real hard to to employ the high school kids.
And those are great, good kids.
They are, Nora, the Coffin Bucks, I mean.
Those are fantastic young kids.
Those kids were the reason why I brought my kid out of Indiana schools and brought them here, cause I went, if they grow up like this here, I I have to be part of this.
And you know, most of them do, most of them do, there's, it's still, it's a real good school system still.
It is, and it's just exciting to see what you guys do here, cause I came from, my my high school was bigger than the entire town here, the entire city, so we had four thousand kids.
Lot to be said, lot to be said for public schools.
Yeah.
Kids just grow up a certain.
So, yeah, my freshman class was fourteen hundred, so it was, we had, we had three graduations, it was, it was a small town in Indiana, you know, it was in Porter County, but I'm I'm not too far from here, but uh. Yeah.
But I was in Fruport, but my class was two hundred and twenty, but my sister's class, a year behind me, was like over three hundred.
Yeah, and and my my school was across the street from McHornfield, so that tells you, we were in the middle of nowhere, but we still had a big school system. And then and then my parents, and my parents and my entire family worked for the school system, so I wasn't able to get away with nothing, I'm like, I didn't even make it to the principal's office. Yeah, I went to the custodian's office or I went to my my aunt's office and speech, it just depended on what school we were in, it had what, five middle schools, you know, seven elementary schools, so yeah.
And Mike knew everybody in his class.
I did.
Yeah, and taught everybody in his class.
We had lots of kids though, we were, you were the biggest class through that high school a long time, we were over a hundred kids, that was a big class.
Your mom and dad's class was though like a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
There's a hundred kids, a hundred and some on kindergarten, now that would surprise me. Yeah, I was gonna say, I I think most classes now are about a hundred.
Now.
It's just really. I mean, it's good for, you know, knowing each other and being small and.
Yeah.
And family like, but uh still it's.
It's like my daughter's grade, she's in seventh grade, but there's more boys in that grade than all of them girls.
It does have, there is some fluctuation back and forth.
There's like only four girls.
Some, there's a lot of girls.
The rest are boys.
I think the fifth grade class, a lot of girls.
That's why I grew up with boys, I was first and then boys came after. Had to wait a while to get girls.
Yeah, in the neighborhood, I grew up in the heights up there by Smith Park, there was probably thirty-five boys within four or five blocks and only four girls, yeah, it was really crazy, it's.
And you never go out and play.
We never had any.
Play with dogs.
We never, oh, I didn't play with dogs.
That's funny, it's four girls.
As I got older, I would, you know, uh.
I have a six year old, I play with dogs, you know, I have dressed as Elsa, whatever she wants, she gets, you know.
I have two daughters, you play with the dogs.
Yes, sir. It's amazing what you get talked into.
Yeah, when you have a couple of daughters.
Yeah.
Yep. And it's funny because my daughters were older here than my son.
Oh, boys are easier.
I don't know, my key favorite girls are easier.
Oh.
I have one, boys are easier, I only got one.
I think boys, boys cry more, my my dad has six sisters, so he's the only boy though.
I had three boys and boy, I tell you, there was times. There was times.
I love that. There was three of us too when I was a kid, so.
Yeah.
We tried my mother while my dad was working. You were good boys.
Yeah.
Tough on mom, but you were good boys.
We we tried to kill each other.
I'll bet, I bet there were some good fights in the Baker House.
Yeah, well, we lived there with all of our cousins too, so out on the prairie, you know, when we grew up, there was always a a fight somewhere. Or we'd take off on our dirt bikes and they say, you know, you'd see mom come whizzing down the road, oh, we're hiding, mom's out, she's mad. Yep. Now, how long have you been in Buchanan?
Uh, it'll be sixteen years in June.
I was gonna say, my daughter was born in that house, well, not in the house, but we lived in the house right next door.
Right, but my husband's sister lived with him before we got married, so.
But I think you were coming around, cause we.
Yeah, we were in two thousand, well, we got together in two thousand and four.
Yep.
But we got married in two thousand and six.
We lived in that house until, well, it was sixteen years ago, June, cause we moved out June thirtieth out of that house.
I got married June twenty fourth.
Yep, we moved out June twenty, twenty, or June thirtieth. I had a sewer main break on Elizabeth Street, I had everything packed in trailers in the in the driveway, my brothers and my uncles took my trailers out to my new house and moved me in while I was working.
Nice. That is nice, kind of.
Yeah. I borrowed a trailer that was high enough, it was a snowmobile trailer, so you backed up to my front porch and lowered the gate down and it would right out to the front porch, right into the house, so.
That is good.
Your your husband, before we moved in there, he had a, he had a raccoon problem.
Yeah.
In the eaves and one night.
Coming back too.
One night I heard, I heard something and I'm like, what is going on out there? He's out there with a broomstick at his eaves and I'm going, you better hope that thing don't come out of there, it's gonna grab a hold of you.
You don't know, I mean, I just don't see it, boy.
He had traps on too, it took him like way out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then one stayed in the trap too long one day and the heat, it died, exhaustion.
Yeah, I'll let her open the door and we'll just shut up, cause he.
He stays scared out.
Yeah.
What is it? He took a picture and tested it, be like, it's a raccoon, just open the window, go pet him.
Yeah, there's a, um, antenna still behind the house and we still use it, but, um, I mean, that's probably part of the, of how they're, we figured that's how they get up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't think we had any last year, though.
I could not believe it. When I looked out, he's out there with a broomstick poking at his eaves and I'm going, oh, he don't know what's gonna happen to him if that thing comes out of there.
Comes out of there, down on him, oh, man.
I don't think it ever did.
I don't, I don't think it ever came out of him.
You, you remember if you did.
Oh, yeah. It never did while I was watching, I will tell you that.
Oh, that'd be a story you could tell.
I told my wife, I said, if it happens, you better have your video camera ready, cause, you know, that was still when the video cameras were the thing. And I bought her one, a little one. I said, you better have that thing ready if one of those raccoons comes on.
You'll make some money.
Yes, we will be rich.
You know, I think I heard them all go out the side door.
I know.
I think they do. I think they go out, they go downtown.
They go to get something to eat.
They said this would be quick, right?
Yeah. They go across the street.
Yeah, I knew they did.
Yeah. I thought this was gonna be a fast, uh, period day that has to grow up. When I saw you get up, they started talking about the E B R B again. Oh, God, here we go. Here we go.
I knew it wasn't gonna be like that. I would shut us down.
Ah, no.
Yeah.
See, John, I was saying, hey, we'll build a bridge. We'll cut some trees down.
Yeah.
We'll get you a crash through, buddy. Just let's move us.
Yeah.
After we have a storm, there's a lot of wood available.
Yeah. Now, yeah, but it says do not cut. It's here, paint, one of them says do not cut.
Oh, John, he's getting here.
The door's locked.
Is it John Leonard? Don't let him in. We were just talking about you.
I just wanted to come make sure everything was okay.
Oh.
Mike's not bloody or anything, so that'd be cool.
Yeah, Mike just got done talking. No.
All right, well, as long as you guys are all okay.
Hey, hey, John, I was just gonna say, I told Mike that you offered to build him a bridge across that creek.
I can build a bridge and I can get, you know what, I have a generator at home. I can take care of what's there.
It won't take much, I'll tell you that right now.
Really, I would just be like, you can put a nap house over top of that home.
All right, right? I said John would have some interest.
I gave you your port-a-potty numbers today at, at my board meeting, River Saint Joe, he's like, maybe you get a couple of port-potties. I'm like, okay, I'm gonna have to sit through it and like, they just loaded them seven, I was like, four hundred and twenty dollars. Like, I'm not sure how much that is, but we need one, we need two.
Well, I mean, we get, I get more than one for a season.
Yeah, we want two.
I, well, I think I have eleven or fourteen of them, yeah.
So that's for all of it?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just thought it was for the two that, uh.
No, and they come once a week, including ours, so. We have special events that we already have scheduled in there that they, they actually plan to tour.
Yeah, I saw that number and I went, I'm just gonna go dig a hole. We got a big drill and a tractor and we'll just put it out outside that and we'll cover it up. You know, and like, we got some peat moss, we got compost.
I don't think it would be that bad. You should call Pride.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, until we get that second building, we just don't have the capabilities for, for three hundred people to be there. We do, but we just feel that there's more, you know, so as we're putting the second event center out, uh, there as well, it should be by the end of twenty-three, we're hoping. So we have projects, we got lots of projects that should, hopefully, what we were hoping for them both to be running at the same time. Uh, I can say Thistle Down, um, here in town and then at the Sliver at one oh one and one oh three.
Right.
And then, um, and our event center.
What is the Thistle Down?
Off the record.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a Mediterranean restaurant and an offsite tasting room, uh, wine and cider. We can't sell our beer there cause the prohibition laws. Uh, and we can't hold a class two liquor license, cause we thought about going up for one of these three adult licenses. So we can, under our license and our agricultural license, we can actually have, I think, seven or eight offsite tasting rooms, so we can sell our wine and cider throughout the month. We can do some things that are similar to beer, but when you touch all contents, it just, it's a very, very tricky place, uh, with the liquor commission. So we get a lot of leeway with certain things, but, but there are certain things that they say you can't do, so we just can't sell our beer, which is fine, we'd like them to go to River Saint Joe. What we can do with the bike trail that goes from River Saint Joe downtown is literally throw one of our kegs on a bike and roll it down the road and, and take it to Thistle Down if we want to, like, we, but, but we can't have our beer in, in town, town. They're just, it's, uh, they don't want us to try to overtake the, the restaurants.
I'm not sure that's exactly true.
That's, ideally, I, I would assume with you that would be, they're just, it's a joke, a running joke that we have, so I'm like, we're not actually going to do that.
Okay, we're watching for you on a bike.
Nobody says I can't buy a keg and just walk down the road with it, you know?
That's true. It's not tap.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, so.
You can't have one of those.
I just find it super weird that there's some weird laws that we can, we can do according to the state, you know, and then there's just, there are certain things that we can't do, you know, like sell our beer at another location that's an offsite tasting room. You know, but we can sell our wine and cider all day long, you know, it doesn't matter. Kind of interesting.
No, there's nothing.
It's just if you brew your beer and they don't want us to take over and not, the bar's out, so that's what they said, they're like, with the way.
He's on the outside of the bridge.
He's talking about wine, it's gonna be hot cider.
Yeah, he's on the other side.
I heard Doral, we're, we're, they're doing the building on it.
Here they come.
The recipes now.
Did you guys have a nice meal?
Jeff, that's closed session, we can discuss what's happening again. I did ask.
You guys are all over the pole, though, you know, like, well.
Heather, good job, you guys do it for us.
Okay, everyone make a motion to.
Jerry?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to return, uh, return from closed session.
Does this work?
It's not work.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Okay.
Consider action?
I'm Lou Dolph, I'm the city manager, take action for so discussions held in closed session.
Thank you, is there sport?
I support.
Well, problem with that?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yes.
Martin?
I'll say.
It'll be hard to. First question. Do you want to open it up for public comment? Anyone you have a public comment you'd like to make?
Maybe next time.
Talking about closed session, you don't open that up for public comment.
I'm sorry?
No, no, we're back.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to make a public comment on a non-adjunct item?
Oh, I have several, but you're gonna be here for one. I've already talked to you about one.
Clock's ticking.
Ross Sanders books.
He'll be there Friday. You can go join Sister Money.
Saturday.
Saturday, sorry.
I'm coming, not Friday.
You go on Friday, cause I think there's plenty, there's plenty there.
What time you gonna be there? Don't tell me it's twelve oh one.
I, I, I'm gonna have to find out, I'll let you know.
All right.
Anyone else? Those are public comments. All right, let's move down to city manager comments.
So I wanted to share that we've had a lot of developments in the city lately, um, involving grant applications as we saw this evening. And I just wanna emphasize how hard the staff has been working to change the culture here in Buchanan when it comes to spending taxpayer dollars. And I hope that the public is seeing that. We're trying our best to make sure that every tax dollar spent is stretched as far as it can. We're trying to double and sometimes triple every dollar that we spend with matching funds, through grants and various opportunities. Um, so I wanna make sure that that's emphasized and clear, that that's one of our largest goals. And we're spending a lot of time doing it, but also being successful. We've gone, rounded up a significant amount of grant funding compared to previous years, so I just wanted to throw that out there and highlight that.
Thank you, it's much appreciated. Mr. Weeden? Mr. Swam?
No comment.
Mr. Nellie?
No comment.
Mr. Money?
Great, I'll reiterate what the, uh, city manager Grace just said. Uh, I think it's a great thing that, uh, what we're trying to do here and everything. Um, we had a great, uh, Thursday at Buchanan Chili Walk. I don't know if everybody participated in that. Seemed to be a lot of, uh, uh, people downtown. They were, you know, it was a crummy night, but it was a good night for chili, so, um, it was just, it was just fun to walk around, hear the comments and stuff, you know, about, uh, what's going on in town and everything else and, um, I just wanna say happy birthday to Big Babe back there and so with that.
Don't?
Yesterday.
Thank you. Um, I was gonna say the same thing. The Chili Walk was a huge success. It was great to see that many people downtown. There was actually, there was three hundred and fifty people.
Is that what they told them?
Or somewhere in the neighborhood, three hundred and fifty people, but.
Yeah.
It was aw, it was great. I mean, it was, it was great to see. It was, after two years, it was, it was really nice to see downtown buzzing like that. And the chili was really good.
It sure was.
Most of it. Um, what was my other comment? Oh, I was just gonna refer to the public. There aren't many public here, but, um, spring cleanup is April twenty ninth and thirtieth at River Street. So just a reminder to clean out your garages and get your stuff thrown away. That's when they put all the dusters down there and you can take everything but paint, tires and all that shit, chemicals. Or electronics, and electronics is just right. Yeah.
Are we gonna have diorite? So I can take or will one of you come and pick me up with my stuff?
You can, I'll, whatever you need, we're neighbors.
Ah.
Will diorite take your?
Yeah.
Would you take your diorite?
It's all batteries.
Tires, you gonna take them in diorite?
No, no, they don't take, I know what they take down there.
You know, honestly, I'm gonna have a, I'm gonna have a truck and if you have some things you like, I can stop by and you can throw them in the truck.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, with that, I mean. Where'd that come from? Thanks, brother. Can we get a motion right here?
Money?
I, I, so.
There's sport, I'll support.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Dowey?
Yeah.
Money?
Oh, yeah.
Swam?
Yes.
Thank you so much for all the sticking around.
We're gonna have some conversations down here. We're gonna have more fun.
So when are you coming?